Good evening. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Hamlet City Council. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. We'll ask for a moment of silence. We need to remember those who have either passed or who are sick with COVID. We need to remember the Ukraine and we need to remember those who are running for election next week. So we'll have a moment of silence. Amen. Council, you have before you this time the agenda. I'd like to add item number fourteen A, which will be a proclamation for Older Americans Month. What are your wishes at this time on the agenda?
Move that we adopt?
Motion and a second? All in favor say aye. Pose likewise. Council, item number four, you have before you request to approve the minutes from the April twenty-sixth of twenty-two meeting. What are your wishes on that? Okay, I got a motion. Second. All in favor say aye. Pose likewise. Okay, item number five, we come to that moment when we have the comments from attendees. If you have any comments for the council tonight, please come up to the podium one at a time and just state your name. Good evening.
And my concern is Washington Court. I don't stay on that end, but I'd be up on that end a lot. There's a lot of things going on that that need to be corrected. Kids hanging out there and then we have small kids walking through the neighborhood. Anything could happen up there. You know, we, well, a couple of years ago, we had a shooting going on up there. And I'm just concerned serious about what's going on in my community. That's all.
Okay, I would ask the police chief, I know there's some new initiatives that are going on up there at this time. You have some comment, I believe it's cameras and that sort, more patrols?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say good evening to the mayor and council manager, and I'm very pleased to see this can be more attended tonight. Even though I'm on the hot plate. Glad to have everybody here because it's usually just like the ten of a beer and I shouldn't care about the community. I'm here to listen. Y'all know I live in town and I could go to school in town. So I'm as weekly as best and thank you. We'll get back on track. So what we're doing, I don't believe in blaming others. This is my super honor, my super tankership, and I'm driving, right? If it goes wrong, it's me. I've got, this violence issue just hasn't started in the last six months, right? Been here a while. So we either have two officers, either one, when I came, I met the manager and council, we had two officers. One, we keep on keeping our, or two, we start picking rocks. And inside, we start picking rocks. What council has done, we have a habitual issue, we turn over into a partnership. Officers will come, spend six months, get trained, and then go somewhere else to make more money. Problem that you have with that is you lose institutional knowledge, right? So if the officers go out there and patrol, they're patrolling for six months a year, they get another player, they get another housing, they get another issue. Now all of a sudden, they're gone. Now you bring somebody else in and they gotta learn all that from scratch. Secondly, some officers didn't want to deal with that situation, right? But they're in the meetings just like the rest of us. Thirdly, technology-wise, we weren't where we needed to be. So what we've done, the mayor is absolutely correct. The council met January this year. I encourage you to go back and look at the meetings. They approved initiatives to increase the pay for officers based on their performance, how they do their job, based on the time with the department, and based on their education. But if they're here, longer they get paid more. It's been a huge benefit. I told the mayor earlier, we showed up on call, it happened just inside Dalton Pike. We get a lot of bleed over from Dalton Pike. I understand that's not us. Somebody was hurt very seriously with an iron pipe. Officers are out there, our detectives are out there, and all the sheriff's deputies, all of them, all their pens say, "Serving since two thousand point one." That used to be us. My sergeant had sixteen years' experience, officer had five years' experience, two detectives had twenty-plus years' experience, I've got forty-six years' experience. So we are shifting based on what council has approved. In that direction, we're retaining that staff. Second thing, they allowed us to retire two extra officers, right? People ask, "How many staff, how many officers do you have actually physically patrolling?" So the college pays for an officer, so you have an officer out there. Pretty much tied up out there. You have somebody that sits behind the desk. About twenty. It's not a lot, okay? When you look at, they gotta cover four shifts, twenty-four hours in a day, so a lot of shifts, four shifts. But council did approve two extra officers. What we've done with that personnel, we've added several additional initiatives, which are three aspects of doing. The first one is, we are going to increase our employment. Before I started, officers could patrol the entire town. Right? They can all spend all day. That's Lieutenant Roman, he's gonna weekly business card mine on the back desk. They can spend all day on Shaw Road if they want to, right? Well, since I've started, you will always have an officer now that's positioned where we call the north side, that's seventy-four North, okay? The Dalton Pike, you always have an officer there, right? You may have to leave to back somebody up or somebody gets arrested. Keep in mind, we only have two officers on duty. Right? Eight thousand people, about twenty thousand calls to service. It's not a lot, okay? Then, what we've done is we've taken one of our officers that they were using as a community resource person, and we've actually assigned them to, this is their geographical boundaries, can't go in too much operations, I kinda laid out these, Spring, Mar grass, Monroe, Dalton Pike, down to Seaboard, Raleigh Street, and up seventy-four. So he stays, right? His primary job is to identify homes that we're having trouble with, the players that we know, and start interacting with those folks, building cases, doing things that need to be done. When we're fully staffed on night shift, right? You'll have one officer over here on the north side, you have two officers on the south side, two officers over on the north side of Washington Street, right? You have a traffic unit, which council approved because we're doing a lot more things today than we've ever done in this department, right? They'll be available. We have a detective, we changed how our detective work. Instead of all of them in the office Monday through Friday, eight to five, each detective has to work a second shift. That's four P M. until one A. Right? But you have a detective out here, something may happen. They're the first ones to respond, they can make sure the crime scenes are secure, they can make sure the evidence is about this, and they can start working that case immediately. We have detective, one detective works Saturdays at night, one detective works Saturday days. So we'll have a detective on like six days a week, sixteen hours a day, within a day of that. With the traffic units, what we've done is we increased the number of officers that we actually have on the street. We have looked at a scientific model or a statistic-based approach to policing and found out, and council gets it poured, where we have most of our calls, what time we have most of our calls. What we've done is we allocated personnel for their business times and we have them out, okay? The last thing I've done with staff is to pay. A lot of people call bullets, right? Because they have me, they walk. They have one person down. So we can't have it like that, right? So with all that being said about staff, as I said, I'm the captain of the super. Can't turn the super back very fast, just like it's like a duty for anybody to call it back. So we've got to turn, we've got to make things better, we are to reinforce. Technology-wise, what we've done is we've extended their cameras up, right? We're gonna do some witches with those, some of this new stuff.
Thank you. So what we've done is we've instituted the new camera system, okay? And this camera system, compared to what we used to use, we rented those. So we had three cameras, we leased them for three or four years, and at the end of that lease, we didn't own them. The new system, we actually own these. So we buy them. The council has approved twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars every single year to put cameras on the street, all right? So we rolled out four. Now, what we're gonna do is every year, we're gonna try to buy more cameras, okay? So my whole plan is we're gonna have a camera in every point where you access Hamlet. So we're gonna catch people on video. The video actually has software where we're working with Target, believe it or not, Target. We send them video footage and they have facial recognition software. They can clean it up where we can see it, right? So we're using that software. We're also using more investigative software. We've dumped, we've seized in the past year, say seventy-five cell phones, and we've dumped those cell phones, and we've got invaluable information. The other day, I stopped the car, had some felony drugs in it. We seized the phones, and actually, one of the phones come back, I remember we had the shooting down here in front of the bar. Well, that suspect's phone was actually in that car, right? Now, he's in prison, but we're able to get information off that phone, which linked him to that crime even more than what we have, right? Our detective's getting ready to hopefully resolve the homicide that we had at Speedway a couple of years ago, right? We're doing that because we're doing geo-fencing warrants, we're doing financial warrants. We're doing a lot of warrants that had cellphone dumps, we're doing cellphone tracking, we're doing a lot of different stuff they haven't really done in the past because of the turnover, they really hadn't had a chance to do the things that we're doing. So those are some of the things that we're doing enforcement-wise. Our second-tier approach is we're going after the property owners, right? I've had it. You have these folks who own these properties, they live in Charlotte, they live in Greensboro, that department you're talking about, we're on them. So what we're gonna do is start writing them for every code violation that we have. We're gonna send it to the owner. We're gonna keep that up. And at the end of the year, if he don't pay, I'm gonna push the attorney really hard, have all that added to his property tax. So my hope is, if we do that enough, they're gonna say, "Hey, you know what? We don't want those buildings anymore." We're actually in communications with some folks now of some problem areas that we have. They say, "Look, we don't want the property no more, we'll give it to the city, we'll just level it," right? So that's what we're doing code-wise. The last thing we're doing is we're partnering up, right? We're working more closely with the sheriff's department, we're working closely with the federal agencies. What we found is a lot of our repeat offenders in town, you know, I've dealt, we dealt with a guy, what, six months ago? And he's been charged like seven attempted murder charges, right? He's beat everyone. It's just not us. He's done it in Rockingham, he's done it in county, he did it in Laurinburg. He's done it. And the first thing, you know, somebody told me was, "Well, you know, folks are upset, tell them that nobody wants to talk to us." Look, I get it, right? I live here. Some of these fools are crazy, right? They're crazy, right? So we gotta be smart about it. We gotta do the technology aspect of it. We gotta do the legwork. We're gonna have to build cases. Even in cases now where we got folks that don't wanna talk to us, we're still solving those cases. Now, they're not getting prosecuted because everybody has a right, and we all know this, to question or challenge your accuser in court. You can't do that if the other person doesn't come, right? If your victim doesn't come or your witnesses don't come, you can't take their statement in because it's hearsay, right? So what we've done is we've coordinated a lot of our efforts with federal agencies, right? We're using U.S. Marshals to track people. We have several cases now being prosecuted at the federal level through ATF. So we're getting folks who are repeat violent offenders, that are felons that have guns, where we couldn't get them prosecuted before. The federal government's coming in taking those guys. I'm sure you've heard some of the cases. We've had a lot of success doing that. So we're partnering more with our teammates at the federal, state, and local level. We're using the SBI more to come in and help us on some technical stuff. So I'm confident that as long as we can continue to get staff, council supports us, the manager continues to support us, and everybody in this room gets active and helps us, that we can turn this around. Understand that we are gonna have violence, right? That I can't fix it all like that, you know? It's twenty-six years I've done this. I wish I could separate make promises, I can't. But I can tell you, we're gonna start working hard on our part. And like I just told the mayor, if they don't wanna work, they ain't gonna work here, right? Because we have to start fixing this problem. I go all the way back, I care like all the folks that up there. I live here. My kids play on these streets. They walk the streets. They go to Fairview, right? I got officers' kids go to Monroe. So we need to fix it, but we're gonna have to do it together. So if you wanna start a community watch, right? We just launched, Rockingham kinda let it out before we were ready. But now they got text-to-tip coming through Crime Stoppers, so it's completely anonymous. You can text a tip to us. We won't, nobody will know it's you. You'll get a number, you'll go to the bank, we end up making a charge off of your tip, you end up getting the money. We think, you know, where we've seen that deployed tips have gone up like sixty percent. And officers have been getting live tips actually on crime scenes saying, "Hey, your shooter's right there wearing a red jacket," right? That's how fast it is. So those are some of the things we're doing. I'm not gonna say it's gonna be a magic pill or magic bullet, that's just not who I am, but I will say it's gonna make a big difference. And when people start complaining, you know, because maybe they're getting stopped, or maybe the officers are everywhere, or the cameras are this and that, that's when I need your folks, I need y'all to stand up and say, "Hey, look, we've had enough of this, we need to fix this issue." Because there's just way too much violence, way too much drugs. Everybody will say it's gang. It's gang, it's gang, it's gang. It's not gang, right? There may be gang members committing crime on other gang members, but that's not the motivation for the crime, right? There, that's a commonality characteristic that those groups share, but that's not why, that's not like a turf war, right? It's the last shooting, I mean, well, the last one was over drugs, right? One was over a girl, one was over a stolen necklace, one was over a guy punched another brother in the face, so he shot him, right? Sure, we're all familiar with that. So we do have gangs and we're working on that aspect of it, but it's not like you would say per se gang violence. It's just a commonality characteristic that they all have. I know you hear a lot of that too, but we do know we have gangs. We have three certified gang sects in town. We know who they are, we're working with them. We're trying to get that identified, so I hope that answered your question.
So what, what, my, my concern is that neighborhood where the apartments at, y'all know, y'all done put the cameras up. What they did, they backed away from the camera.
That's correct.
Now, we, we all gonna go after being people that own the property?
The problem we run into, sir, and that's a very good question, is y'all notice, we started enforcing the sidewalks, right? Folks having a cool one on the sidewalk, hand-to-hand, having a good time, right? The problem we run into is now they go on the property. Well, we go after them on the property and somebody that lives there says, "I've invited them to be here."
Yeah, I know for a fact. Ninety-nine percent of the people that y'all see out there don't stay there.
They don't, but when you have a resident who comes out her door and shows you her key or their key, and they say, "No, baby, they're here, they're my guest, and you can't do nothing with them," we can't.
True.
That's what we're running into. It's not an excuse, that's just the truth, man, right? So we gotta go after the property owner. We need to remove that altogether, right? We, we gotta remove that altogether. Number one, they're substandard living. If y'all have been in those, they're not very nice, okay? We went out the one, knocked on the door and the whole door fell in, frame and all, right? Okay? Right? So they're not great, but that's, sometimes that's all people can afford, right? So we gotta help folks, good folks, find places where they can be. But if somebody says, "Hey, baby, they're here with me," that's all we can do. We can't violate somebody's constitutional rights.
But is there any way that they could have to prove to the point that they only leasing anything?
They're, they're guests, just like your house. It's like I can't stop you from inviting people over to your front yard. I can't.
But do they, could they, the owners present a list of people that's, that's, they asked it, they can't do that?
Are they, are they trashing the property? Is the property being covered up with trash?
That's a good question. What they've done, you've seen the new camera, right? It's got the blue lights on it. Well, that's pushed everybody off and back behind the bushes, and that's where.
We need to have a camera behind the bushes.
Well, give me some more money. And we do have some money coming in this year, I joke. But what we're also doing is we're developing a list of maybe ordinances, maybe no parking on that side of the street, right? But I've gotta go through council, I've gotta go through council, we gotta make that happen, we gotta make sure it's legal with the attorney. But those are some of the things that we're doing is through the code side of it, we're objectively looking at what we can do to eliminate that as what's called an attractive place to do business, right? And no parking will be one of those. That will justify the officers actually getting out and then interacting with folks, okay? It's, we're not gonna violate anybody's rights, right? We're gonna do things by the book. It's not nineteen ninety-five anymore, right? So we have to do things of that nature to ensure that we're right legally. If we have to prosecute, we can, but we're also protecting the neighborhood. But that's the issue we're running into, is if somebody says, "Hey, I live here, they're my guest."
Chief, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
When they come out and they have a group, doesn't the neighbors have a right to complain a nuisance of noise?
Correct.
Do the people gather? I mean, they can have them at their house and be their guest, but if they're creating a nuisance, isn't that grounds to disperse them?
That's a very good question, sir. And you are correct, as long as it falls within our statute, right? Or the disorderly conduct charge, but that's typically public area. You could argument that somebody's front yard could be considered, aspect of it, but you're probably gonna lose it with the new legal updates.
The noise, the noise ordinance doesn't kick in till, what, ten o'clock at night?
Ten. So there, there are some things that I think as a group, guys, and I wish I could run and do all this tomorrow, but keep in mind, you know, things that we're doing new is we have traffic, right? So they're out handling traffic stuff. We're doing code stuff. We have an animal control officer, right? We're finally working on the evidence room to get it situated, right? I have, we have so many cases to be investigated that, to be quite honest, it's not what everybody wants to hear. We can't even investigate some of them, right? Because we're having to deal with the rape cases, the child rape cases, the shootings, the robberies, and everything else. You got three detectives. That's it. Three, okay? Three. We got a major coming on board, hopefully, and they'll do some investigating. But that, we have a very high volume for three, I'm not asking for more people. I'm just saying the reality of it is, one, we can't really afford it. Two, we just don't have the personnel to really dig in and do what has to be done. So we have to prioritize, right? And that's what we're doing. If I, we had abundance, if I had fifty people, I could be working on ordinance changes, all this stuff and all that, but I don't. You know, right now, we're doing a new camera project, we're doing, getting ready for the Fourth of July. We just finished up budget. We're trying to get cars situated. We have a lot of different projects that are in motion right now that are requiring resources and dedication of staff, right? So it's gonna take us a minute.
Chief, if, if I might say, Mr. Baldwin, thank you for coming. Okay, thank you enough, I appreciate you. All these faces that I see, I think this is the most faces we've seen. I tell people every day, "Come to the meetings, come to the meetings." We, Washington courts, I, I share your sentiments. We bring it up every council meeting. I brought it up last council meeting, we talked about it. I call the chief. We're, we're meeting and talking and riding by the hotspots of Hamlet. If they move back, we're gonna move back with them. If they move back another street, we're gonna move back with them. I need y'all to get his card. Everybody in here, take his card. Call him if you see something. Like, we, we have got to, we can't give up. That's, that's what we're gonna do. As long as I sit here, we won't give up. We're gonna let the citizens see that we're gonna lock people up. We're gonna abide by the rules as much as possible. But the key thing is we not gonna give up. We are not giving up, and I want everybody in here to take his card. And if you see something, look, we gotta fall, we gotta stand for something, or we'll fall for anything. The, the problem in the past, I think, is that when there's a shooting and there's a death, we're, we're emotional at the time, and then we move on till it happens again. We're not giving up. Again, they move, we gonna move. The guy that came that's on the corner up there that moved here from, from New York or somewhere, he's talking about a, a, a community watch. I'm the first, I'm gonna be the first one to sign up.
You need to do that.
The key is we cannot give up, and as long as I sit here, we won't give up. And, and I hope that answers, and I hope that, that, that gives you some relief. I share the same sentiment. You got my number, call me, but we won't give up, and I implore everybody in here, come to the meetings and get his card, please.
Mr. Stewart, Commissioner Stewart's correct, and council's been fantastic, okay? They've been a hundred percent behind me. There's been gas, the manager, gas all the way. What have we got to do to fix it? Let's fix it. He's right. You know, you go out to a shooting and they say, "Hey, can I help you?" And they say, "Go blank yourself," right? But we're still working with that. If you wanna do something, start the neighborhood watch, call us, we'll reach out to you. Sergeant Jackie Brown, right? Everybody knows, most people know Jackie. She'll help you coordinate it. I'll be there, we'll help. Second thing is if you have the availability, get a Ring camera, something for your house, right? Those things are invaluable. They help us, okay? I can't have cameras everywhere. We're limited on where we can have cameras. But if you can put those stuff in your house that look out on the street, that, that, look, when somebody tells you to go pound sand when you're there to help them, the only way you're gonna solve that case is through ballistics, right? We take stuff to the lab now, we have it tested, it's called Nibbins, Nibbins Tested, we do DNA, fingerprints, all that stuff. And we've actually linked guns to multiple crimes. Second thing is videos, right? If you have the ability to get Ring cameras or some type of video that on the outside that looks out into the street, not in somebody else's home, but in a public area, that's a huge help to us. It's a huge help. That's, that's, that's a huge, huge help for us, because that camera will catch something, right?
And don't be afraid to call nine-one-one. They're not, they're not gonna put your name out there or anything like that. They're gonna send help and, you know, you're there and you know what's going on in your neighborhood. You call nine-one-one, they'll get an officer on the way up there.
All right, thank you.
Somebody had a question in the back.
I think there's more, yeah.
You got a question, come up, please, ma'am, and state your name.
Thanks, Peter.
We really appreciate y'all coming tonight.
My name is, I'm Tyronde Lee, and my question for the chief is this. I know I heard you speak on community, I mean volunteer, people can come volunteer. So my question to the police, how often do the police come out and begin to get to know the community? Or have we formed something to, to interact the police with the community?
Yes. Good question. We are coming off COVID, which we've been limited in what we can do, so we started taking baby steps, right? We've went out, we've bought, you've probably seen it, icicle, popsicles for the kids, we'll hand those out. We're more active, we're getting out and meeting some of our key stakeholders, but as we transition into, we have an event coming up, I think it's what, June the tenth? We have one June the tenth, I think, where we're having food trucks, we're gonna have a bunch of events for kids, and the money, the, the money raised goes to Crime Stoppers. So we're trying to do this. We're gonna have an open house this year, right, to get folks in. We also have, which needs people to sit on the board, the Community Police Board, right? We're struggling to get enough people to have a quorum so that we can have our meetings. So if you wanna benefit and jump in and do that, now with all that being said, you wanna have a block meeting, a street meeting, a group, we can do that.
Okay. So, and you said we can have volunteers on the board, so how, how is the community supposed to know when the, the board is active to help with the community?
The board meets, supposed to meet about once every quarter, right? We meet more, we met pretty aggressively the first six months I was here, because we had no rules, no regulations, no bylaws, so we worked, got that situated. We took a break for Christmas, and now we're trying to get enough folks to come in so that we can have the board meeting, right? And we're also, we have seats that are open because folks are coming off the board. So if anybody, you know anybody, wants to participate, we'd love to have that, that input. Again, community projects, we're gonna start rolling those. Again, community projects, we're going to start rolling those out, um. It's just, right now.
Is it advertised to the community in any way?
Have you got on our Facebook?
Um, no, I haven't.
Yeah, our Facebook's very active. We have Instagram, Facebook.
Is it in the, in the, in the newspapers?
Yeah, the newspaper typically picks it up, but the best way to find out what's going on with us is Facebook, Instagram, uh, Twitter. Uh, we have a person now who, um, does all that. He's, he works out at the college, so he has a little downtime. So, he keeps our Facebook page open. Uh, it's a good way to send us messages, DMs. Um, it's a good way to find out what we're doing and what the officers are up to and what programs we have going on.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Leek, we'll make sure we do a better job of getting that out. And I hope you don't mind me saying this. I appreciate you being here. I want everybody in here to know that this lady here lost her son in, within the last year to gun violence. And thank you for being here, and I'll make sure that I do my part to make sure that's advertised better and to do whatever I can do to get everybody involved. I love Julius. I loved him from Leek Street. And so, I will definitely owe that to him to do my part to that.
All right, thank you so much.
But just like all of you are here tonight, if you would form your community watch, the police officer, the chief, whoever, you can set your meetings when you want to set them, let the people in the community know that you're going to have them. And you sit down and talk with about these things, and as y'all are able to talk to it, and, you know, you might say, well, maybe I got something wrong at my household and somebody else on the committee didn't know about it. So, uh, I, I strongly recommend you get with them and, uh, and, and get that community watch. That'll help. But be sure that you call when there's a problem up there so we can get an officer there right away.
But she, she's correct, and, and Commissioner the mayor's right. We do need to do a better job of getting stuff out. Um, that's one thing I push and work for. Um, I know I think in the budget is maybe a sign, electronic sign that's going to be out here that we can put meetings and topics and agenda stuff up. But it's just not the people, the folks in this room that complained about that. You know, I get, every meeting I go to, I get hammered. They say, we just don't know what's going on, right? We just don't know what's going on in the city. Um, so, I think that's something that I know the manager's exploring and council's looking at. We're really aggressively trying to find ways to get our message out. There's a lot of good, there's a lot of positive things happening in Hamlet, right? As I tell everybody, our better days, instead of, we, we don't want to make it the way it was forty years ago. You can't go back in the past. Our better days are ahead of us, but it's going to take all of us working together to get there. And so, that's one of the things that we've identified, and we want to do a better job of getting our message across and getting our message out to the public. So, open for ideas with that, too.
Matt, is that something we can put on the, uh, just hold up, is that something we can put on the, uh, water, water bills and stuff? Advertising these meetings and things?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And we'll start putting that meeting on the water bill.
I, I've just got a couple of the comments. So, what you heard tonight was the chief coming in, making some good positive changes, right? And he's, he's, uh, he's got the people there, he's got the experience, he's got the experience and knowledge. Um, we've basically said, do it. Um, I think, uh, there was a lady here a few months back, and we said, just start locking people up, right? Just get them off the street, maybe they'll leave or whatever. Unfortunately, that doesn't happen. Done a, a wonderful job, and it is going to turn and change. But I'll say something that's probably not the most popular thing in the world. You're living it right now. And to hear us tell you that it's going to take some time, you still got people in your community breaking the law, shooting at people, hurting people, and injuring people. And if I were in your shoes, I would be ticked off, and it's sad that our society is the way it is now. We're fortunate up here because we've got him to start this process. But every other town council in this state and this country would love to see people that's fed up with it and come to, come to our meetings and basically say, we want you to fix this. If it means locking people up, lock them up. And there are some things that we can do right now, such as ask the attorney a question. So, if somebody's in that area and they call about a noise complaint, and our police get there, um, and somebody comes out like they do and say that they're our guest, well, couldn't some of that responsibility go to that person? And possibly charge that person as aiding and abetting, um, and ultimately, don't work with the people that own this apartment complex because they're not going to work with you. They could care less. And they've shown that by their actions, not by what they've said. They've put us in a bind. People up there getting shot at, hurt, fights, drugs, and everything. So, we need to figure out something more we can do like right now.
Well, and to your point, Mr. McQueen, um, there are some more things, the chief was just saying, that can be done. And there are hopefully some ways that we can get more and better cooperation from renters and property owners. I was actually, as the chief was speaking, talking with Matt about, uh, or with our manager, with, about some other possible options. And so, a lot of it depends on the circumstance, but there, there are hopefully some more things that can be done.
Possibly trespassing letters on file for some of these folks that's up there. If they're there and they're a visitor, well, you know what? They're, they're trespassing in, in some situations.
That, that's exactly right, and I, I think a, a big piece of it is what the chief said, which is, if the property owner, you know, isn't helping, it, it ties their hands somewhat, but there are some other options.
They still have to answer to the owner that they're renting from. So, I mean, at the end of the day, this man right here is everything he said. He's talking about directed patrol. He's talking about putting people up there. He's talking about, you know, zones where there's, there's, there's going to be somebody there where they're not all on this side of town. But at the end of the day, not every place in, in Hamlet's dealing with what y'all are dealing with, and it's sad.
And you are the eyes and ears of the community.
And the thing that really ticks me off personally is y'all are here tonight trying to help solve this, and the people that are up there causing the problem don't even live there. They don't even live there. They don't have any stake or whatever in that area.
And it's what the property owner comes back and he says, it's not my problem, it's their problem. And if he has, gives me his problem, I think it's our duty to solve the problem. And if that means going to him, hit him in the pocketbook. Hit him where it hurts. And if he handed us, we'll solve it or do the best we can. That's my comment.
Just like Maury said, don't give up.
Don't give up.
Thank you, Chief.
And that man will, he, he will, he will get it corrected, but we've got to do some things while all those things are going on. And it's not with, with them, it's with the management, the elected officials, the attorney, to figure out what, what it is we can do to help short term, right? Because everybody's concerned about what's going on right now. When I go back to my home tonight, what's going to happen?
I believe we've got another comment on the front row. Just a minute, I'll get back. State your name, please, sir.
Oh, yes, Howard Wallace, one block over from Washington Street on Pine Street. But I was simply listening to the, uh, the chief's comment about the, the arrangement of police officers per district. I think it would be a great idea just to have a police presence, like have a police car parked in front of this area that this gentleman was mentioning. Uh, because you do that occasionally, like the convenience store occasionally they, they are parked there. I think that's a big help. So, if this person or this officer that's responsible for that region that you just mentioned could like take his breaks there or whatever, when he's not patrolling, if he could like park there and just observe, just to have a presence, that in itself would be a deterrent somewhat. And occasionally you leave empty, uh, police cars parked there, leave an empty one parked there. And that would probably, you know, get somebody's attention if they want to try something, you know, off the record there. So, that was just a suggestion. I think it's a fine idea to do that. And if he's parked there, we could go meet him or we could, you know, introduce ourselves to him. Everybody in the community that would know he's there, why he's there, what he represents. So, that was a suggestion.
Okay.
Hope, uh, hopefully we take a look at that.
They're, they're good, good, good suggestions. Uh, the officers, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, the officers are mandated, uh, to do their reports, uh, in high crime areas, right? Uh, Speedway, believe it or not, uh, Memorial Park, uh, Dollar General, Mr. Bead's. Uh, they are mandated on that side to do their reports. What we're seeing is there's increased presence until, you know, you have a massive domestic, we have more domestics on this side now, right? You have massive domestics, we have to arrest the whole house, and that sucks every officer you got on duty to, uh, Freeman Mill Road.
They haven't learned to play nice.
So, it's, it's not a perfect solution, and, you know, that's why we need ideas and input from everybody.
Thank you, Chief. Gentleman on the back row, did you have a comment, sir? If you would come up, state your name and.
That's good ideas.
Good afternoon.
Now I know who you are.
Surprise, surprise.
You should be on the phone.
Y'all young enough to know about Goma Pala here. My name is Gerard Anthony Morrison, five-one-nine Charlotte Street. The illustrious, most internationally diverse street in Hamlet, North Carolina. We have Cuban, we have Jamaican, we have Mexican, we've got African-American, we've got European-American. So, we are the microcosm of this city, so want to make sure we point, pointed that out in here. In this month of diversity for appreciation for Asian and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. Couple of things tonight. First one, and the priority for me right now, excuse me, we need your help. First word is Hamlet. It's the Hamlet Senior Center, Thursday and Friday, May twelfth and May thirteenth. We have a voter education and candidates forum. Folks running for county commissioner and sheriff, that will be Thursday, one PM until four-ish. And on Friday, there will be Board of Education. Judge Wallace is becoming by talking about, uh, judicial processes because, you know, judges can't really give opinions. Your counselor knows that better, better than all of us. And we're also going to have, uh, the chief of youth probation, Levanda Jones. She's going to be bringing some brochures and things because realistically with our community, we have a rich rural community. We got to embrace that. The last five letters in community spell unity. We have one of those few areas where grandparents still have influence in the households. So, in this senior center, it's, it's focused on a fifty-five plus, but they're doing big things over there, a lot of things to do. So, we want to see you faces, your faces in the places. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, if possible, if, uh, if we can contact the chairs, and, and Madam Clerk, too. The chairs for each board, uh, the appointed boards and commissions, for somebody to come by Friday because we're all focusing on voter education first, just to talk about what they do. If you notice even here, what Chief Brown had, basically was explaining was processes. A lot of our stuff is, you know, the stats on how much do we really know about civic government and how things really work. So, seeing those faces in the places are instrumental in getting that across. And other things. I wasn't going to get into, but I will suggest on there in spirit of what Mr. Wallace said, too. Grants, Department of Justice, luckily, from what I recall, four out of the six of you all worked in law enforcement, am I correct?
Several of us.
You're right. Trooper, the city, chiefs in Rockingham and Hamlet. Then we got accounting and, of course, the A and T marketing. My fellow Charlotte Street brother, we know, but we got diverse mindsets and creative mindsets on the board. But one thing I thought about was when I lived in Greenville, North Carolina. Anybody familiar with the weed and seed? From Department of Justice, and those programs would be viable and timely here. Where the city could do collaborations. Are you familiar with those two, Chief Brown? And when y'all go to these conferences, all this stuff comes up. I heard you saying the statistical models. Good con, good info, good information. And we invest, you notice I didn't say spend, we invest in conferences and continuing education for this. So, let's be receptive toward these creative things that come up. Also, in these grants, we've got ten community centers in Richmond County, ten. And let, let's not even touch how many faith community buildings we have. So, look at all the facilities we have to do creative things. Because as you mentioned, correct me if I'm wrong, some of those crimes were necklace, it was drugs, uh, it was ego. But a lot of this is crimes of poverty. We know we're a tier-one economy. Just lock them up. That's the old-school mentality. That doesn't work. That's why we're still where we are. We learn from old-school wisdom, but we have to be contemporary, and not just with technology. Because when that technology, what I challenge you and the council with, since they make the purchasing decisions, let's make sure we have economic parity when we're having this technology. I want to see some black-owned businesses and some women-owned businesses owning this technology. Yes, Shaq is a investor with Ring, but I want to localize that because things, uh, you know, data shows whenever the economy locally and people are too busy working and doing productive things, they don't have time to do all this other stuff I have to mention. So, I want us to be at a higher echelon when we look at how we improve stuff, not just lock them up. The prison industrial complex has made a whole lot of money, and we didn't benefit from it. Rural areas, local areas that have economic challenges, the first thing they do to joke, that, uh, to boost the economy is build a prison. Bennisville has two of them, federal and state. We're about to put one for juveniles. Ju, um, you know, open one back up for juveniles. See, where he's paying two-hundred-and-forty dollars a day. We talk about we don't have the resources, we don't have the money. Two-hundred-and-forty dollars a day. Reverend Jesse Jackson used to say jail or Yale. Let's look at that. Is that really improving our community? Let's look at all the folks that come back. I look across the room. I was really impressed, you know, sitting on the plan, planning and zoning commission with my classmate, Evan Strohman, and when Danielle gave some of the best presentations we've seen. We have got to embrace business. And for example, if I can use that, Danielle, uh, I'm not sure what the gender is, anxiety, depression, mental health, a lot of your training is going toward that. We have resources like this young college-educated lady that wanted to come back home. She can go other places. But it was misunderstood. She's setting up counseling where people can actually talk. A dentist office is a block away. Kirkley's, the restaurants, everything's right there. To say it's not consistent, come on now, it's a service. She's doing stuff, they're not doing medication or anything like that. This is the type of stuff we embrace so the areas are productive and can get things done. And another challenge for me with stingrays, Chief Brown, law enforcement retirees, y'all familiar with those? Anybody that's here, I challenge you to look at stingrays. It's not the fish. FBI, it's little boxes where they can come to your area, just like when the president comes through, you can scramble all the data, so you can't use your phone. These stingrays can be used. They cost about a half a million dollars. It's a box, not, you know, about this surface, but it's, uh, three-dimensional. They can be used to take over all the cell phone towers in the area, and that's how they get the data. But there are a lot of privacy issues, about privacy invasion. These cameras, we also have privacy invasion issues. We're going to do this on those sets of town. I want them on every side of town. Y'all know who I am. We make sure, a lot of us don't like talking about race and ethnicity and all this. This stuff is real. We know this. Let's not stop acting like it doesn't exist. Let's make sure it's fair to everybody. Want to see leadership that's reflective of the community. And, uh, so I applaud you taking the courage and try, and it was because you was the father behind the previous chief. We're going to trust that you're going to do well, Chief Brown. Also, in those, personally, myself and my neighbor, we were just talking before we got here, animal control. How fast were they going? That animal control, that police, uh, yeah, when we were on Charlotte Street earlier today talking. Y'all have heard me talk about this before. Charlotte Street is not seventy-four alternate, alternate. Charlotte Street is not bypass. When people rush into work, they still do it in the mornings, going to the school system because they're running late. Some do it coming to work here. But just like I used to get the video camera out, this is before you got here, Matt, so you didn't get, see that the previous city manager told him that. We used to have speed bumps on the lower end of Charlotte Street. We want those back because that's even, uh, getting worse. And definitely on the five-hundred block where we live at, and four-hundred, where more recent Howard and Mercedes live. We want more safety in the sense of just that speed. This is a residential area, so we want to make sure it's treated that way. Just like Jefferson Street, if February Heights gets treated, Charlotte Street is a historically proud and well-represented productive area, and we don't want stuff exacerbate or messing that, uh, situation up. Law enforcement, no, this is to everybody. The tenant windows got to go. It is hypocritical to pull somebody over for tenant windows when we can't even see who they are that are resting us. We can say, yes, my best friend, y'all know he's, is a cop, some know him more than us. He's the director of a police academy in Michigan, one of the model programs that they use for diversity, but you can't be a hypocrite as a parent or anybody else. We also need to be able to identify. We also need to be able to identify that talent. I'm a black male. I have been harassed and mistreated in Hamlet. It didn't stop me, but I shouldn't have had to go through that. I should probably be going through trauma with Tavoris and their talking, but you know, luckily I got V A. But this stuff is real. A lot of y'all didn't know that, but this stuff is real. And we want to be able to, if somebody does something, I want to see that that was, I can identify them, just like you can identify all this stuff in the cameras. And facial recognition, I just caution, we got the council in here too. And even though we're using Tarjay and Target, you know, facial recognition in Europe, in the cities, is not a hundred percent. There's been a lot of errors with that. A lot of people were wrongly and unjustly treated and accused of that stuff. We do not want to invest more in the prison industrial complex. We want to invest in productive, a productive community where we can live, work, play and pray in a productive fashion, not just lock them up. Um, also with that. Part I hear, you know, with all due respect, McQueen, you know, I have nothing but utmost respect for you in that.
Same here.
But when we say this piece about lock them up, and I was glad that you did say something here, but I was cautioned. Council members, with love, I say this. It sounded hierarchical when you say you all need to go to your communities and fix this. And these folks came in here and said.
Who said that?
When you say.
We said buy in and help, we didn't tell.
Hear me out.
No, no, no.
Hear me out.
If you're going to say something, it's going to need to be accurate.
It is.
No, nobody said for them, nobody said for anybody to go fix the problem.
Well, you go ahead and finish, I'll, I'll, I'll wait. You can finish.
I just said what I wanted to say.
Okay, now, as I was saying, what was said was, oh, let me do this. Audience, did you all feel that it said you go fix your problem? Yes or no?
Answer him, please answer him, because that's not what was said.
Let me know.
And to misrepresent that Gerard is a shame.
And that's why I commend you, McQueen, I said, you said in there, management, council and everybody has.
And I want to clarify one other thing. When I said lock them up, I'm talking about the folks there where they're shooting people. Everything you say is valid. There are a lot of crimes in poor areas. And it all is a result of the socioeconomic status of areas with crime. But at some point, you've got to arrest people, Gerard. You've got to arrest them to stop the problem at that moment. And I stand by that one hundred percent.
I stand with you on that, but I want to make sure that when we are arresting, it's going fairly across the board. Because in this crimes of poverty and socioeconomic status, there was riot redlining that was created, not by this council, but previous years that existed.
Mr. Gerard, can I ask you a question on the parity of it? Uh, and you're going back to the old school and you can't, you want it fairly across. Are you saying you want it for all the communities?
Yes.
To be fairly, or you're just directing it at one community? And I'm getting that you're just directing that it's, uh, only at one community is it being, the law being enforced. And when we know it's being enforced all over the city and all over the county as far as I know. And going back to the old school, locking them up, if you commit a crime, what happens? You get arrested.
Does everybody get arrested?
Does everybody get arrested?
Does everybody get arrested?
Yes, they do, that I know of. If you do the crime, you can't, you can't go say that though, Mr. Gerard. You can't, you can't pick that out.
But I mean.
That's what we're called law.
History class, we can do that into another one.
Yeah.
But we know, let's not act like it didn't exist.
That's what you said.
Some of y'all's watching, no, I want fair, no, it does exist, it still exists.
Yeah.
So I will say that.
Gerard, Gerard, we usually give everybody five minutes. We have extended you, if you've got a point, please make it.
Okay, well, the other one, on a lighter note, but I did want to, you know, I was holding, that wasn't intent when I came in, but I was in there. Uh, other pieces, comprehensive plan, uh, expressed in there to Gail that I wanted to make sure I was included on there. And if you can elaborate on that tonight too, what a comprehensive plan is. And there are a lot of historical sites, especially from black heritage that need the attention that they have so long deserved. And I think we should go ahead and make sure those are included in that comprehensive plan. Um, and in creativity, I told, I said, man, it just hit me. If NASCAR can come from moonshine and become a sport that we get economic development money for, it bankrupts, the racetrack has been probably bankrupted at least three times that I can recall. How can we channel this same energies into a positive track? Y'all call it guest dog method, I'm not too much into this, but if we can use those strengths, I just want to use that as a model. Let's use those strengths to change this same, channel the same energy and these same conditions so that we can improve the health. Because we look, that's all it is, and you know, McQueen, I want the audience to know, it's nothing personal, we're just passionate people. That's what it is, there was no issues in that. But we've got to be able to express ourselves and I want folks to know that they can come up here and that things are better. In the same way, the stuff I've been listening to on domestic terrorism with Q Anon and Q adjacent. And the same thing with gangs, are they considered gangs? The oath keepers, is that considered gangs? Because, you know, there's places even close to, that people live within two blocks of this building right here, you aware? And we need to make sure, because that's why I was cautious about bringing a brewery here. When, as you said, a shooting was right here downtown. But we've got to deal with the mental health and that's passion here. So I thank you all for the time.
Thank you Gerard, we appreciate what you do for the city. Thank you so much. Okay, hang on a minute. Wait just, just a second.
I wanted to respond to one thing that, um, Mr. Morrison said, and that is, you know, I think the chief pointed out that limited resources have only allowed us to invest in four cameras. And he's done his best to analyze areas and we have heard this from your neighborhood, your citizens in your neighborhood that you're having crime and you're tired of it and people are on the street. So when we allocate the limited resources that we have to your area, it's not to target you Gerard, it's to help people who are saying they won't help. We could space these cameras all over Hamlet, but that wouldn't do nearly the good to the people who are coming to us saying we need help. If we take our limited resources and concentrate them to help solve their problems, we're not doing anything wrong racially. We're trying to help solve their problems. And I think, you know, when you try to take that and turn it into an, an issue of us targeting a community based on what you perceive as prejudice on our part. I really think that, that you need to talk to the people who've come to us every month and said, give us help. And I think they will probably tell you that we appreciate the effort that they've got.
I agree. Remember, certain things in council, just like in your neighborhoods and in your families and your households, certain things don't get talked about outside the house. I'm one of those people they talk with.
Well.
So.
We only know what they tell us. They come to us and say we need help.
And y'all know Gerard would speak for Gerard and just like any other community, everybody doesn't feel that strength or have those skills or have that confidence. So sometimes you have to speak and be voices for the voiceless.
Okay.
We all know that. Now, the other piece though, on the target, my caution is because y'all know I've traveled a lot like you all do. I've seen that where it goes, so I want to say that proactively so that we don't make that mistake.
But this conversation came up as a result.
Oh, yes.
Of a community member coming to us this, this evening.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Baldwin saying, we have a problem at Washington Court. He's trying to explain to Mr. Balding, Baldwin, what our response has been to, we acknowledge the problem exists and we're doing our best to help solve it. Because every month, somebody's here saying, my children walk through those streets when they get out of school, I'm worried about them. We're worried about them. You know, and if we could buy fifty cameras, they'd be all over town, but we can't.
Abby, actually, I don't even want us to go to that. I want us to eventually get to where, just like any nonprofit, we actually don't need any of that because we turn it around.
Well, I know, but that, you know, in the meantime, we have to try to stop it where it is. We can't just hope that we'll all get out and sing kumbaya and it'll quit because it won't.
So, but I'm saying, and it's because the same thing that we didn't say is just as we have districts for law enforcement, we want them interactive. That's why I'm strongly for, you know, Matt and I've had this conversation. I am strongly for having a district and at large system for elected officials. Because at large, just like you all are running for what happened with the county commissioners. When folks feel that at large and even the run, the barriers of entry to run, this county is fifty thousand people, that cost. There's a lot of people with good ideas, but they may not have those resources, but they've got great ideas and it shouldn't be a barrier to them.
Mr. Gerard.
Same thing here, we, I want the, one, one second, I'm gonna get to you. I want, I would like for you all to have districts, that way you're accountable for that district and it's easier. And for you all to be present too. And you recall, I was the one that said, let's get the names and the contact info on the websites, because they were calling me instead of you all. So, and I'm glad we do have that, so we, so we do see that, Abby, I agree with you. But at the same time, I just said, let's be proactive and caution with this, cautionary with it.
Mr. Gerard, excuse me for interrupting, but what has that got to do with solving the problem of these citizens in, in Washington Street and, uh, uh, Spring Street? What, bringing in the districts and that, that doesn't, that's not having anything to do.
That does.
With what we're doing to protect these citizens and make their life less stressful.
Crime stoppers. We can call them, we can be.
Well, what have you doing? Have you, have you tried to get a, a community watch or crime stoppers are going? Have you tried? And you live on Charlotte Street, correct?
Have you tried?
Have you tried?
The thing is.
I don't live there.
No, I did that because.
I don't live there, Mr. Gerard. And if I had a problem around my house, I'd take, I would do, I'd be proactive and give every effort I could to help it. Instead of coming up and saying this. And, and what you've just said has nothing to do with helping these citizens with their problem.
Totally disagree, that's not the game we're playing here.
All right, listen.
If you can, Mr. Mayor, please, he did direct it to me, so if I get forty-five seconds.
That's enough. We have heard it, we've been doing this for an hour now, and I think we've well extended them out of time, uh, to allow you to be up here and speak. And we've allowed everybody, is there anybody else that wants to speak on this issue? All right, and you can come if you want to make it brief, but Mr. Morrison, thank you. All right, the lady on the front up here. Please state your name and be brief.
Look at Mary.
What's up, Oscar?
Hey.
How y'all doing? My name is Mary McLaren and I live on Bridges Street in Hamlet and I know quite a few y'all up there. Um, which is South Hamlet. And the chief said that they're going to be patrolling, trying to get more in the community. But I, on Bridges Street is like a main street in South Hamlet. And we need at nighttime, I stay across from the park. I see a lot of stuff at nighttime. And we need a little more presence at nighttime. And, uh, if possible. And I told you when I came in, I want to talk to you. And that would happen. And my next question is, um, the, um, rezoning of, uh, the Strohman property.
That's, that's coming up in another issue, so if you'll hold on and speak up when we get to that here. Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. Yes, sir, go ahead, chief.
My child. I get my whole life off. Right, I get that, look, my child's at home. I mean, we can work, make the world better. We can do that, I'm that guy, right? I just need to do that. In doing that, we do have increased focus on control, but we've identified those folks who are our repeat violent felon. Right, they're the ones that are shooting people. They're the ones that are going on YouTube, making the videos with all the scenes, you hadn't seen it, go watch it, right? They're the ones who are out there celebrating violence and they're targeting people. Man, we have to do something. We had, we had fifty-four rounds fired the other day. Most of them AR fifteen, that can go from there to right here. Fifty-four. We got to fix that. That's going to take care, that's going to take people, but you're absolutely right. I, we're working on a plan, I talked to the manager about it the other day. We're going to have cameras here, but we're also putting cameras in our park. We've got crime in our park. We have issues in South Hamlet, so the manager approved for us to have an annex office down there. We're going to have your traffic team down there, the detective down there, the jurisdiction down there. You'll have somebody down there. We're going to put a camera down there, one of our low light, no red cameras, because they want some naughty stuff there at night, right? We're going to stop that. We're going to work and stop it. So when I get those calls and some mother or father's upset because their, their child has to go lay on the floor. Right? I got to fix that. I have shootings on my street. I got to fix that, right? In order to do that, we're going to have to take, you can't lock everybody up, we can't lock ourselves up out of this situation, we can't, we can't. You work on this, you do a community program. No, 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 we're going, we're going to do three problems, right? We're going to enforce it. We're going to work the countryside, which really hasn't been done. And then we're going to work with our community partner, of which everybody in this room that visits Hamlet. I don't work for Rockingham County, I work for Richmond, Richmond County, Rockingham. I don't work for those people. I work for the citizens of Hamlet, y'all pay myself, right? That's why I'm here. I work for you. I'm going to fix our problems and do the damn best I can to get it done. I'm just going to do my best. They're doing their best, they support what we're doing a hundred percent. They haven't said no one time. They know about the investigations, the S B I, stuff's been done. They know about the staffing issues we have. You put somebody in a six square block area, whenever they can go to another agency right across the street and have a whole county to play in with no zones, right? So we have to work with that. We have to keep our staff motivated, we have to do the things that they stay here. We have to make this a place that they want to be. You have more officers today living in this town than I have when I started, right? So we got to fix it, we got to start somewhere. And these are some of the things that we're doing. And you're right, they're getting behind bushes, but hey, it's working. We may have moved it a little bit, but we moved it. Now let's deal with it over here, right? Eventually, because the mayor's right, seventy-five percent of the people that are violent in our community don't even live here. They don't live here. We need to get them out.
A lot of them not even from in town.
They are, right, they come from other areas. We need to make this a hard target where I'm not going to go to Hamlet and do my crime, I'm going to go somewhere else. Because if I go to Hamlet, there's an opportunity that my crime's going to be interrupted. That's what we're trying to do. And I appreciate everybody's input, gosh, I do. Like the mayor said, I'm here, you know, I got three kids in my office, my wife's in Elizabeth City. Um, I'm here to talk, my office is open, right? I'll give everybody my cell phone, you pay for it, you can have it. You want to take it home with you if you want to, it rings about seventy-two times a day. Um, but I tell you right now, that man and those men and women up there have been nothing but supportive of everything we're trying to do. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, chief. Uh, so just to summarize what we've done tonight, y'all have come in and you have given your issues because you have complaints. You have found out that the city council knows about it and the city council is working on it. You've got issues that the chief is working on and, uh, things are coming around on that. You know who you need to contact if things are going on. I've recommended you get a neighborhood, uh, committee started, that's not something that the city council can start because we don't live in the neighborhood. Somebody up there in the neighborhood's got to take responsibility to say, okay, we're going to go over to such and such a church at five o'clock tonight, we're going to meet with the police department and we're going to set up a community watch. Simple, we've done it out here, uh, on the other side of Hamlet and it made a difference. And it doesn't cost you anything. And, uh, so you get a lot of good information out of that, but just the fact that you're here, I hope you've learned something from it. And I hope that you'll always come back and visit with us because if you've got an issue, we need to know about it. Was there someone else that wanted to make a quick comment on this particular issue? Yes, ma'am, just come up and say your name and.
Good evening, everyone, I'm going to be very brief, my name is Mercedes Taylor and I reside on Charlotte Street.
Pardon me, will you remove your mask so we can hear you, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, um. I am concerned about the treatment center and, you know, how it would affect our community.
Okay, we're going to. Okay, we're gonna get into that in just a minute. If you would hold on and we'd be glad to have you make a comment on that, okay? We're gonna have a whole separate hearing on that. Does anyone have any other issue tonight that's not on the, that's not on the agenda? If not, uh, yes, ma'am. Okay, just come up to the microphone, state your name.
I live on Charlotte Street, um, for sixteen years now.
What's your name?
My name is Ms. Reed, Diana Nichols Reed. And I live in the middle right there, um, on Charlotte Street, five-on-four. And I noticed the speed traffic when they come through there. It's horrible. People are driving like crazy. My, I have grandchildren that come and visit. And, um, they actually hit one one day, passing through in the morning, in the middle of the day. The middle of the day is kinda quiet, but the morning and evening, it's very terrible. Even if I'm turning in my yard, they actually be on my bumper. So, I see where they have a, um, between Carney Street, I see they have a twenty zone right there. But we need something on the top of the road to show them that, you know, people are living in the middle and we have grandchildren. Dogs get killed, cats get killed in the twinkling of a fire out there. So, if you could do something, we'll appreciate that very much.
Well, I, I will tell you this. I live on Oak Avenue, below the middle school down there. And you don't want to go out after three o'clock in the afternoon. And I, you know, they're up and down that street, they pick kids up to school, make a loop, come back up there, they're wide open. And so, we have, you know, we have the same problem in several different places and Chief might wanna make a comment.
Well, I just feel that I could address that issue, even cause it's my concern for sixteen years. Okay? Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Is there a particular time that it's worse? Certain times? Okay, when people going to work? We had a moratorium for a long period during the COVID situation that we could not take any animals to the animal shelter. And now this has corrected itself, so. That's been a big plus. Yeah, okay.
And I'd like to comment on it, when we, enforcing speed limits and we find, and the people that are speeding, it doesn't matter who's driving the car. He's breaking the law and he's speeding. And that's the only way we can do it. Is when they, when they break the law for whatever reason, and it doesn't matter who they are, then they will, uh, pay the fine, crime, uh, on it. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Matt, can you get with the shop and see if they can get some children at place signs down there? In visible spots, maybe speak with her and find out where would be an appropriate place to do that.
Is, is Charlotte, is Charlotte Street a state road or is it city road? Matt?
That's a, that's a city road.
It's all city street, right? Okay.
Yeah, except for where it intersects with one-seventy-seven, that would be state right away.
Oh, okay, good. All right, moving along, item number six, public hearing number one. Scotty and John Bethay have filed a rezoning petition for their, uh, property located at five-zero-nine West Hamlet Avenue. Mrs. Daniel Dig, Danielle Diggs would like to operate a mental health and substance abuse private counseling practice at the location. Property is currently re-zoned as residential, which would not allow this. And they are seeking to have the, uh, uh, property rezoned to a business. At this time, I'm opening a public hearing and I would ask, one at a time, any comments that you've got?
Hello, my name is Danielle Diggs and I am the owner of Overflow Counseling and Consulting, private practice. And I'm here concerning the property of five-oh-nine for it to be rezoned. One of the things that I was explaining at the last meeting, my idea to have the home rezoned is simply because of its home-like atmosphere. One of the things that I deal with, because I've been a mental health and substance abuse counselor for over ten years now and I do work at an agency here in Richmond County. Uh, a lot of people have anxiety because the agencies resembles hospitals or doctors' offices and it delays them coming to get treatment, you know, months or years until they get enough courage to come in. So, having the home rezoned will kinda lessen that anxiety and offer a more friendly, warm environment where people can have therapy and feel relaxed, safe and secure in the home environment. Um, just to clarify, it's not gonna be an agency where there's multiple people coming there at one time, multiple cars coming in and out of the driveway. Private practice, you have that one-on-one counseling, so it'll probably be one person, because I'm just one therapist. So, I can't see multiple people unless I'm doing a group. And if it is a group, there's gonna be less than five people. Um, the business hours would be from eight to five, so nothing after hours. So, no one's gonna be disturbed or anything. Um, if you look in the folders that I gave out, I don't know if everybody had a chance to kinda read over everything, but the very first letter form, the first paragraph is a little bit about me. The second paragraph talks about mental health and the third paragraph explains some of the services that I would like to offer. Turning the pages, you'll see a whole bunch of numbers and those are statistics and the.
That's not just Hamlet, is those?
It's North Carolina. I tried my best to find the statistics for Richmond County, but it was hard, so I had to do. It's the state of North Carolina. But all of these numbers, if you just kinda look over everything, it shows that mental health is beneficial and it's helping a lot of people. Not only that, but it's an intervention, meaning that it's decreasing a lot of mental health and substance abuse hospitalizations. So, therefore kinda eliminating crisis-like situations before they even begin. Um, the very couple of last letters, which everyone does not have, those are character letters that people have wrote on my behalf. And I just kinda wanna take everybody's attention back to the first form. Just in case, if you have questions, I'll go ahead and read over this, maybe to answer some questions for people who haven't read over it. But it says, "I would like to take the time to introduce myself as the new therapist of Overflow Counseling and Consulting." "To start from the beginning, I, Danielle Diggs, grew up on West Hamlet Avenue, attended school in Richmond County, cheerleader at Hamlet Junior High and Richmond Senior High. As a child, I enjoyed having Burger King, the gas station, daycare, grocery store, old Board of Education building in close proximity. Later on came the dentist's office to the neighborhood that was convenient for everyone. After high school, I moved away to obtain a bachelor's and master's degree in social work. Returning home, I started a youth nonprofit called Far Community Services. And I have been providing mental health and substance abuse therapy for the past ten years. As a current Richmond County resident, I feel it's important to contribute to your own hometown with skills learned and as a resource. Since the pandemic, I noticed a demand for mental health and substance abuse services. A recent study found that depression has been there, been three times higher during COVID-nineteen than before the pandemic. Physical, emotional and psychological burnout from disruption of our normal lives, otherwise known as COVID fatigue. Social isolation combined with the lack of activities that bring joy is extremely difficult to process emotionally. Uncertainty, hopelessness, frustration, anger, worry and fear are just some of the emotions that may be present during these turbulent times. Many clients I have served experienced chronic grief from the multiple family members lost due to COVID-nineteen. To have a counseling agency within a neighborhood reach would be beneficial and in addition to the already established community. I would like to inform you, it is in my best interest to continue building the community along with the daycare and all of the other businesses. Overflow Counseling Agency will serve male-to-moderate mental health issues such as depression, anxiety, adjustment disorders and more. Severe mental health disorders such as psychotic disorders will require more specialized care and will be kindly referred to nearby agencies suitable to treat individuals with severe mental health issues. Substance abuse treatment will consist of talk therapy and will distribute no medication-assistant treatment. I look forward to being a part of the community I grew up in and with pleasure being a positive addition. And I would just like to say, um, I'm glad I got to just hear all of the community concerns, because a lot of things that the chief and the community was mentioning, a lot of the poverty can trigger or create mental health issues. So, trying to encourage people to see counselors would be a great idea. So, whenever they have their community meetings, I definitely wanna be involved, so I'm gonna get one of those cards. I've also worked with Rockingham as well as Anson County with the crisis intervention teams, just kinda talking to police officers about mental health and how to deal with people who may have mental health that they come into contact with whenever a crisis occurs. So, at this time, if anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple. Uh, my first question is, why did you decide to want this to be general business rather than office and institutional?
Well, I was thinking that the general business would be pretty much beneficial for that, that area. But are you saying that the office and institutional would have been a better choice?
Am I right on that, Gail? She would qualify for office and institutional in that, wouldn't she?
Counsel would have to rezone it to office and institutional.
That's what I'm saying, but I, I, that's the difference between that and general business.
Yes, I think the reason of requesting the B-two was because there was existing B-two in the area.
But everything, everything around you there is all residential. Everything from the Dairy Queen all the way down that whole block and behind it's all residential and across the street.
Did you consider that as an option?
I didn't consider that as an option.
First of all, it's a very well-written report. Excellent report. You did a great job on that. I, I've got a question for the attorney. Um, so, if the approval of this ordinance to change the zoning, if it's done for, for, for her, for her business, does that open up any future businesses in that same, and, and, and?
This is a spot zoning.
Bear, bear, bear with me for just one second. Um, and I, I think we had it one time before. So, if we were to zone something that wasn't in the zoning of that particular area and like you stayed there for a little while and you wanted to go somewhere else, like one of the businesses downtown or, or wherever, um, could like a inpatient facility open there? Could?
Any kind of business.
What are the other scenarios that other businesses could be there that may not be as supportive and conducive to the, to that zoning? So, if you could just speak to that?
That's a good question, sir. And I'm actually gonna look at, uh, look at Gail, cause I was just about to pull up the table of uses and don't know if you can get to that quicker than I can. Uh, and, and just for the audience, what, uh, Mayor Pertham's talking about is, when you rezon the property, um, e- e- even though Ms. Diggs is, has got this very specific use and she's explained it to counsel, if Ms. Diggs were to get the property rezoned and then she's no longer operating her business there, that zoning stays in place. So, any other business that's allowed in B-two could, could open up there.
Anything.
And I think our manager is, uh, is pulling up that now. And, and this also goes to the mayor's question about one office institutional instead, because there's a sort of generally different uses or a little bit more restrictive than B-two. Mr. Manager, you've got the, the chart. Do you want me to, um, read some of these out or do you wanna go through them, sir?
Um, I'd ask, you, would you like for me to just review a couple of the uses that are approved in B-two? There's several categories or how would you like to address them?
Yeah, just, just give us some examples of what can be used in there.
So, our uses are broken up into categories. Um, first category is agriculture. None are allowed in B-two. Uh, variety of residential uses are allowed in B-two. Uh, some accessory uses, uh, like structures and things that go along with recreation or with, um, residential uses are allowed in B-two. Um, there are plenty of recreational uses allowed in B-two, ranging from athletic fields, clubs or lodges, uh, dance schools, electronic gaming, uh, you know, golf courses, things like that are, uh, allowed in B-two.
And, um, a lot of those uses, not the, although not all are not allowed in office and institutional, just to help counsel see the, the distinction.
Yeah, then some, uh, educational uses, which are, um, variety of, you know, schools and churches and, uh, daycares and things of that nature are permitted in B-two. Um, then, um, of course, some government uses are allowed, like police offices, police stations, orphanages. Um, a specialty hospital would be allowed in B-two. Um, then you start to go into business and professional service usage, which a variety of things are included. I mean, they're pretty much all included in the B-two zoning district. There's at least two pages of them, but they range from automobile repair, uh, banks, barber shops, beauty shops, um, engineering offices, uh, funeral homes, uh, things of that nature. I could go on, but there's literally like four pages.
What about office and institutional?
Okay, um, office and institutional, I'll try to do a quick comparison here. So, going back to the beginning, um, all the residential uses are the same. Uh, a lot of the recreational uses are not allowed in B, in office and institutional that are allowed in B-two. Pretty much the educational stuff I mentioned is, is pretty much very similar.
Yeah.
Um, the business and professional services, you start to see some differences, um, and some selective things that are allowed in business and not allowed in office. Um, and that really continues throughout. There's a lot of business uses that are allowed in B-two that are not allowed in office and institutional. Um, and that's pretty consistent. I don't see many cases where there's something allowed in office and institutional and it's not allowed in B-two. So, B-two's much broader, in summary, B-two's a much broader zoning district than office and institutions.
So, office and institution is more restrictive.
Yes, ma'am. And I think it's also important, um, I think a lot of the, what are classified as retail trade are allowed in B-two, but, um, I don't believe they're allowed in the office institutional zone.
Yeah, so a lot of your, the retail stores would not be allowed in office and institutional zones where they are allowed in B-two. And the concern there would be if you were to relocate and somebody comes in and puts a, a gaming thing there, like, you know, the, the little poker machines or whatever, um, or a retail place where there's a lot of traffic coming in and out and things like that.
Ms. Danielle, um, I give pride to you.
I give pride.
Um, I, I believe in what you're doing.
Thank you.
Um, mental health is real, substance abuse is, is real. Um, in my family, in my neighborhoods, our friends', family, all of that. Um, but my first and foremost obligation is to my constituents. I have gotten over a dozen phone calls in the last twenty-four hours from Pine Street to Spring Street to Hamlet Avenue to Charlotte Street. Um, concerned about drugs being on premises. I've written, I've, I've read, very well-written, so I know you're not writing prescriptions and all that great stuff, but the myth, the concern, drugs on premises, writing prescriptions, um, traffic, if you leave. value of homes depleted. I mean, I've gotten it all. What do you say to those citizens?
It's simply a service that could help the community when it comes to substance abuse. It's not like someone's gonna come to therapy and they're actively using, they're coming because they're seeking out help. That's normally why people come to therapy. So it's more beneficial in helping people change their lives versus, you know, just saying, okay, you're an addict, you're gonna always be an addict. No, everybody can change. And so you can't just label somebody based off of some of the things they've been through in their life.
But what do you say to all the neighbors that have residential properties all around it?
Well, one house is abandoned beside me, it's no longer occupied. Then there is the daycare and I think as of right now, they're going through renovations. The other person basically grew up beside me, they're all forward. I had a lady leave a note on the door last week and I called her, stranger, don't know her, she stays across the street, and she's like, oh, I think this is gonna be beneficial. So I'm getting good feedback from majority of the people, even the dentist's office down the street.
Exactly. Which house is it? Is it beside the daycare?
It's the house.
Two houses from the daycare.
Yes. It's like one house over from the daycare.
Coming from Burger King, is it two houses before the daycare?
No, it's, yeah, that's true.
I think what you're doing is definitely beneficial and is definitely needed.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, to rezone a piece of property means that it is forever zoned as business. It would be B2 whether you're there or 20 people down the road. So the implications of changing the zoning for you has implications for all of the property owners that follow. And that's why we're trying to get you to see that there might be a more appropriate rezoning classification than B2 because the issues and the possibilities of anything being in an office and institutional environment are so much more restricted and appropriate to a residential area, whereas B2 is just kind of wide open.
It does. It just blows it open.
And it, you know, somebody, if you, you know, obviously, as you know, the service is needed and I don't deny that at all, but if you were to take an office and institutional rezoning approach, then if you chose to leave the property, the possibilities for what might happen to it after you were gone would not be as liable as to the people that still lived in the community.
Understandable.
Ms. Diggs, I have a question for you. And I just love your feeling heartfelt for your fellow man. That is really, really well noted. But at 509, is this the house you were raised in or you grew in? So you want to take your personal residence and turn it into a business?
Yes, give it back to the community.
And rezone it for that, your personal house.
Do you live there?
No.
Yeah. But I really admire your love for your fellow man and trying to help your fellow man. Thank you.
I like your idea. I think your program and your plan is great. However, changing the ordinance or changing the zoning to a B2, everybody that goes in business has plans that they're gonna be there for many, many years and make a go. Problem is, it don't always work that way. Or you may decide to go somewhere else. And thinking in terms of an automobile repair shop could be moved in there, house torn down or rebuilt or something like that, I just, I think it'd be detrimental to the residents who live in and around that specific location. Therefore, I would be opposed.
Let's, yeah.
Not anything to do with what your idea is and what you want to do. It's a great plan and I think it's needed, but I think you'd probably be better served if you look for a more appropriate location.
Let's hear what's, have we got some residents here now that maybe wanted to speak up? Wait a minute, let's take the lady in the back there, real quick, and then take this gentleman at front. State your name again.
My name is Taron Delik again. I think it's, I think the, maybe you all need to consider because we was in here all night and we heard a lot of crime activity all around the, all around the community. We do know, we just come out of a pandemic and we know people are suffering from depression. We know people are suffering from, I don't know about you all, but in the paper, there's been a lot of arrests, amen for drugs and drug activity and confiscation of drugs. And I think it would be an awesome opportunity because one of the things I'm hearing you all mention is you don't know how long she's gonna be there. One of the things that she began to say is that she went off to school and she made her business decide to come back to the community, to give back to her community. And so that says a lot about her. I think that it would be an awesome opportunity because the neighborhood that she's wanting to open up the house in, two streets over, there's a lot of activity. It's a lot of drug activity. There's a lot of poverty. And like she began to say, some places, I've worked in mental health. I pastor, I pastor all around. And some of the things I've been doing is dealing with families that's dealing with COVID, drug activity, drug abuse. And so I think it's an awesome opportunity. I know, I know it's going against the zoning, but I think that's something that we need to consider, I mean, for her because it will be beneficial to the community. That's just how I, I mean, I see it. It'll be very beneficial because all we talked about tonight was drug activity. We talked about depression. We talked about all these things for an hour and a half. And so we have a citizen that wants to come in and make it better. And the only thing we're talking about is zoning and how long she's gonna be there. I think it would be an awesome opportunity for you all to consider and give her a chance because it's for the betterment of the community.
Well, and I think we've all said that we think it's a wonderful, wonderful, I think for looking out for a fellow man. I think her, I think her plan personally is great, but I think her planning for a location, she needs to look at another location that would be better sit fit for her.
Or more appropriate rezoning.
Rezoning place, yes.
Something not B2, which is so much broader in terms of conditional, I mean, of permitted uses. But if she went with the office and institutional, which would still allow her to do what she wants to do, but the permitted use range is not nearly as wide open.
So I'm gonna ask a question. So is it, is it because of, is the rezoning, is that financial or is it just for the community's sake or the residents there? Because there's a, there's a daycare there. There's a dentist's office up the street. There's a restaurant right across the street, so I'm not, I'm not understanding why the rezoning for the business would be?
But office and institutional would still permit her to open her clinic there.
Okay.
I mean, that wouldn't change if she could still do everything just with a more appropriate zoning classification than B6, B2, I beg your pardon. So, you know, that's what we were saying. Maybe change from a B2 request to an office and institutional request.
That is a definite spot, what we call spot zoning.
Spot zoning is illegal.
That's bad, yeah.
You can't do spot zoning.
You can't do it.
You know, one of the neighbors would definitely have a case against us for spot zoning.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Come up, state your name. We know you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. My name is Commissioner Tavoris Bostic. I'm absolutely in support of Danielle Diggs. I've been in the mental health field for 14 years. I have a private practice myself right here in Richmond County, Bostic Counseling and Consulting. For what I think about with Danielle Diggs is, one, she's a young business owner. I know there is at least one of you on this board, most recently, that said that you support small business here and you support small black business here. Black business, small business. Small black business, small business period, is the backbone of rural North Carolina. When I think about all the privigials that we've been to, when I think about all the shootings that we've had, when I think about all the drugs, all the arrests, all of this equates to mental health. For a lot of us, we're busting at the seams because we can't accept any more people. What we have here is a college-educated woman who has a very rare license. A licensed clinical social worker in the field of mental health is a very rare license. There's maybe five of us, maybe, here in North Carolina. So are we asking this young lady that she can't do this mental health thing? One, which is a big conversation here in Richmond County. Outside of all the other things that we talk about here, mental health is always on the ticket, at least top three. So the big question is, if mental health is a true priority for us and we're saying in this room that we want to try to fix that, how have we given ourselves permission to work against ourselves?
Well, we're not working against her.
No.
We're asking her to choose a more appropriate zoning which will allow her to do this in this house.
Are we saying that she has to now come back with, which one were you saying? Which zoning, which one were you saying?
Office and institutional.
Okay, she can come back. You guys will approve that one, but we're saying no to that. Is that what we're saying?
Well, she'll have to go back through the planning board. But it certainly, what she wants to do is a permitted use in that classification, just like it is in B2.
Okay.
So.
So which one? Which one is she applying for now?
She applied for B2 this time, which is spot zoning on this particular lot.
Which one are you saying she needs to apply for?
She needs to apply for office and institutional.
I don't think, if I could take a moment here, I've been listening to the comments tonight and I think this is a very important discussion, I would interject to mention that the question before the board tonight is not, do we want to allow this specific business at this specific house or property? The question before the board tonight is, is this property identified by the materials in the application appropriate to be rezoned to another zoning district? It really is very little to do with the specific business, although it's very important and I think everyone's agreed that it's a very needed service in our county. The question for the board is, is rezoning this one property amongst residential zones appropriate and consistent with the development in our community? So I just wanted to focus on the question and, you know, take a step back and allow this guy.
So are we, so for the other businesses that were mentioned, are, which one do they fall under? Which zoning do they fall under?
In the packet, there's a map and it shows all of the surrounding properties and their zoning designations and, I mean, it has that information, so.
Yeah, everything from the Dairy Queen all the way down to Corner Street is all residential.
Okay, so we're good on the daycare, we're good on the dentist's office?
And everything behind it's residential and across the street, residential.
Was there any conversation with the daycare about them potentially moving or the dentist potentially moving?
Let's see how that's zoned. I haven't.
It's R6.
Yeah, that's next to, you know, it shows R6.
It's R6. Residential.
Okay.
You have a daycare and residential.
Yeah.
You have daycare and residential.
And it's like I've said, Mr. Diggs, her qualifications and her intent is very highly qualified. But where we're talking about is the zoning.
No, I understand zoning.
It's the zoning. It's not about her or qualifications. It's about the zoning and is it permitted?
So just so that we're clear.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay, just so that we're clear, we're saying that she needs to reapply for the different zone that we're talking about, go back through the process and then this board will approve.
Well, I don't. No, I think what he's telling you is the question before us tonight is can she get this rezoning request approved? That's what we're to address legally at this point.
Well, can I, Mr. Morpheus? As it's presented, would this be an example of spot zoning? And just your opinion on that, if it was to get rezoned and if it was spot zoning?
It's a good question, so.
Be the crux of how I would vote.
Sure.
For sure.
Right, let me, let me just unpack that for the audience as much as for counsel. So when we say spot zoning, we're talking about a group of uniformly zoned properties, in this case, R6. And spot zoning is just what it sounds like. You zone a relatively small tract of land to something different that provides either additional opportunities or reduces opportunities for the person on that property. So I think this would be spot zoning. Now, in North Carolina, Councilwoman Covington is right, there are lots of illegal examples. You can have legal spot zoning in North Carolina, but there needs to be an explanation of why it's there. You know, it matches the comprehensive plan or there's some kind of specific need that identifies. There needs to be a discussion of that. So I think the answer is yes, but if you all just approved a rezoning from R6 to office institutional or to B2 without some sort of justification for why it needed to be there, I think then you would be opening yourself up to a challenge of it being illegal spot zoning.
From the residents there?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, so you're saying that it can happen. It would just be?
If you could show that it was.
Essentially that there is a, there's a reason that it's there.
Okay.
And, well, that's, I mean, I think you would just need to have that discussion on the record.
So the presentation tonight, would that constitute as the reason for it to be there?
Uh, I'm gonna leave that up to counsel. I mean, I think that can certainly be something they consider. The other thing they need to consider, though, and the manager spoke to this, we're talking about a general district rezoning. So again, you're really looking at, is it appropriate there? Now, there is some case law and I guess I'm not too proud to say, I lost this case where I once argued in the Wisconsin Court of Appeals that you can't talk about specific uses in a general district rezoning and the court politely told me, Mr. Morpheus, you're wrong. So I suppose you can, but the guiding principle is that it's for all the uses allowed on the table. And that's really where Ms. Covington's going.
So to the council then, it sounds like there is a lot of emphasis put on if she's going to leave. So how much does that kind of, because that's what Mr. Eddy said, that's what Brother Sellers said, that there is some concern that she may leave and then if she leaves.
And I mentioned that too, and what I meant, I didn't mean you get out of the business or leave the county or anything like that. I meant like if your business grew and you needed a bigger space and then she went to a bigger space, that leaves that property there already rezoned and then that could be an issue.
Okay.
So not, not saying that you're gonna leave and if it come across like that, I apologize.
We're looking at a spot zoning.
If her business grew.
I understand the spot zoning. I just wanted to be clear that this wasn't a thing of saying, well, we're not gonna vote for it because potentially you'll leave that particular place. I get that. We all understand how important this particular practice is and what it would do for a hamlet. I just want to make sure that we're clear that this isn't just simply, oh, she's gonna leave or whatever.
No.
It has nothing to do with it.
No, you can't put that into that.
It's the process that is giving us problems.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Somebody else out here from the neighborhood, I believe, wanted to speak on this issue? No, I know I got a lady on the other one. Mary.
Good evening.
Hey.
My name is Angela Bruton and I would just like to just have you just think about, think about what, you know, what she wants to do. And we all know the procedure as you were talking earlier and I clearly understand that. And deny it, I mean, deny you is, it doesn't mean that she can't do it. She can, but she has to go another way. Am I right?
No, we didn't. Never just a suggestion to her.
Well, I'll just go ahead.
You don't, I mean, I just want to understand because we all are here in support of her and I, I really think it's a good idea. One of the things I have been so impressed with hearing the captain of the hamlet talk about some of the things that's been going on in the community around the county. And we talk about the children and I'm one for the children. I actually work with kids. I actually see kids that may need this kind of thing going on with them, you know. Their parents may need it. And so I'm all for it and I know that, you know, there's things that she has to do by the book and so on and so on. But we don't want this just to be a denial, saying just no, she can't do it. And we know that you guys are saying this is a good idea, but we know we have to go through the regulations or whatever we need to do. But I just wanted to thank, I want to thank this guy here, this police chief. And the reason I want to do that is because a lot of times we don't know the in and outs of what is going on in the community and what people are doing. And I actually pray for you all because you are leaders in the community. We look to you to try to make things happen and without the support of knowing a lot of things. And this is actually my first meeting here, but anyway. But I am so impressed with what he was saying about.
We would welcome you to come anytime. We meet the same day every month and we would love to have a room full of people.
But I am in support of Danielle and so we just want her to be encouraged. We come here to encourage her, to stand behind her.
I think we all want to encourage her too because it's certainly a valuable service to any community.
But we thank you for all that you have all said and. But, um, we thank you for all that you have all said and expressed on here. And, um, I think I'm done, but she's a good person, I think it's needed. And, and I look at the children that's coming up, coming up in these neighborhoods on, in this area. I work with some of them, they come in, and you, you know, something needs to happen. And so, we need as much as we can to kind of work together and, and get some things done, so we appreciate you all.
They need a place to go, they need a place for somebody to talk to.
Yes, we all agree on that.
Just, Ms. Diggs, just, just so you know, I, I wouldn't be for the zoning the way it is now. I can't say I would vote for the other way, but I would be willing, I would be willing to look at that with a measured, measured approach, and take the advice of, of the attorney, that that would possibly be an example of illegal spot zoning. Whereas, I feel like this one, with everything else that's there, I don't, I don't know that that would be illegal. I, I just have reservations about this particular zoning, and I'm in no way making any promises that if you went back, that I would vote that way. But I would be more apt at that point to look at that particular zoning and make a decision then.
All right, Gerard, just a minute now. Come on.
Be fair, Mayor, be fair.
I'm ready to wrap this gavel again.
Mine's just questions of clarity, I was thinking, since Gail's over cold, because I, and I'm reluctant to do this because I sit on the board, but I'm.
You can ask me the question.
Okay. Now, for the former central office for the school system, where the Mexican restaurant is now, what zoning was that before the restaurant?
I believe on the packet, it's notated that it is rezoned to B two and, does that say eleven fourteen? Does that say seventy seven?
Nineteen seventy seven.
It can't be.
That used to be the central office, Matt, for the school system.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Tell him my age now.
Yeah, it couldn't, but it was rezoned to B two at some point in the past.
Yeah, I mean, in the past, fifteen years.
But the previous zoning was, again, what, and it was the school system?
I don't have that paperwork in front of me, Gerard, I, I don't know.
But it's all, it is adjacent to other B two, in that case.
Now, the Snow Cone facility on the corner of, of one seventy seven and Charlotte Street.
Okay.
What, what is that zone? I don't have the paperwork before that.
I don't have that on my, on the packet here.
I'm sure it must be B two.
I don't have the information, I, I don't know. It has to be, it has to be some type of business to be operating there, but.
No, I mean, because, in the consistency piece.
I don't, I don't have the information in front of me to give you accurate information.
But the difference with both of those, Gerard, is they both touch an existing business, uh, an existing business.
Actually, Snow Cone, I remember I grew up on this street. When you turn the corner, you go up seventy seven, there's a house.
Yeah, but the backside of it touches, touches Dairy Queen property.
No, it's in this house before that.
Oh, I see where you're talking about, yeah.
Matter of fact, it's Maurice's cousin's house. Right, Reese?
That property's been a business as long as I can remember, because it used to be a candy factory.
It was a candy factory.
And I can go back seventy years on that one. It's always been a business.
You know, I, I live in the Can Do Department, so what I was looking at is because, when I was growing up, I even remember it was a upholstery place. And you've got that place, then you have the house, that's, that's the Williams residence, then you have the former Kirkland's.
Nothing to do with that.
All that land behind that house right there is adjacent to the, I forgot, the Alco, is what it's called now, the former Kirkland's restaurant. That brick house is right before you get there, if you're coming from the bridge, one seventy seven from Jefferson. The only house facing in that block, that's the only one that's right there. So, what I'm saying that, because if the legal spotting is an issue, I mean, the, what's that called?
We don't have any idea right now what that's zoned.
Spot zoning. We see examples where it was changed, just like with the central, the school system, and we all grew up with, when the central office was there. So, I'm looking at, with that proximity, and the fact that, that daycare wasn't always there either.
But it's legal as an R six, as residential.
And my point in that, Mayor, is it can be changed. And what I was looking at, when I talked about barriers to entry, if that's, if that's what the issue is, what she'd have to go through, and it's, you know, it's true, it's not guaranteed that that would be the issue. But as a business owner trying, and been delaying in business already, and paying another three hundred dollars for the planning and zoning piece to come back just to change some letters from, uh, office and.
Okay, you made your point.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other resident that would like to come up and speak, that has not spoken? Okay, please come up.
My name is Scotty Bethay, I'm the owner of the house, which my daughter is Danielle Diggs. But what I was saying, I would think it'd be a good idea, because there's the house across the street from the, that's gotta be a zone house, because that's a halfway house, and the house at the corner down the street, that's for people who get out of, uh, drug, out of drug, or like, they've been in prison, they come there and they drug add, they stay there, we got three houses on that street, and they do business out of there. Because the state, uh, send people from the prison to that house, so I don't understand why this house can't return to something that can help them people. Because we got a lot of drug addicts in both of them houses, right in front of my house, is a drug addict house, where they send people there for help, and down the street.
What's your, wait a minute, now, wait a minute.
Five oh nine.
Hold on just a minute, now, we're not, go ahead.
They, they zone, they business.
Hold it just a minute.
Well, if I could, I might be able to help Ms. Bethay, and I, I don't know which property specifically you're talking about, but I, I can guess what the issue is. Under North Carolina law, if you have what's called a group home, which, you know, would include people who are in a halfway house, state law says that you have to allow those in residentially zoned districts. So, my guess, and, and again, I don't know for sure. Yes, ma'am, but my, my guess is that they're probably allowed in the R six zoning district, even though, to your point, they're also run like a business, but people live there, and state law says that they're allowed in that zoning district.
Okay.
I know that.
And where the, um, the icy place is, there was an apartment up above that.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was actually, somebody lived there, too, so I don't know.
Jerry Smith converted it to an apartment, that's where he had his roofing company.
I don't know what the zoning is, or whatever, but.
Okay. Is there someone else there that'd like to say something about this?
I think she was on Bridges Street, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, Jesus.
Did you get him?
I don't know many students, not.
Uh, good evening, once again. Um, Ms. Danielle, I just want to, uh, compliment you on your vision. And, yes, it is needed, and it's important, but we understand the zoning, and I heard when you were speaking, you said that you wanted the house because of the, you know, not letting the client think that, well, they're going into an institution or something like that. Um, but I'm thinking also that, you know, that's a matter of aesthetic, also. Like, if you get yourself someplace where it's okay with the proper zoning, as we've been discussing, they've been discussing, you can decorate or make the place looking more homely, but your vision is real, it's needed. I encourage you to continue. Um, just, you know, keep the dream alive, don't, don't let what's happening here tonight, you know, make you give up on your dream. Um, I'm concerned also about the level of clientele and the effect on the community and all of that. This is why I'm here, not saying that what your vision is, is unimportant, and that it's not needed, you know? So, I just want you to know, it's not anything personal against you. Um, but, like, we get to understand, you know, the zoning, and the spot zoning, and the different stuff they're talking about. I don't know too much about it, but I understand the councils, I understand what, what you mean by that, because, you know, you could even grow, or you could decide to take on other areas, and you'd be limited because of, of where you're at. So, just be encouraged, and thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, has anyone else got a comment? If not, council will close the, uh, close the public hearing. Oh, well, you come right up.
My other question, I appreciate her, what she's saying and what she's approaching, but my other question is, um, is the people that you're getting if they're gonna stay there overnight?
No, they weren't, that's not.
Number, number two, because I'm living right behind that premises, and I was, was concerned about my safety. You know, the type of people, because you know when they, they are under the influence, you don't know what's in a person's head. But I appreciate what she's doing, but it's only my concern, because I'm living there, and I'm right behind there. I have no objective of her achievement, but just my safety worried about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon? General Statute one sixty D seven oh one zoning regulation shall be made in accordance with an adopted comprehensive plan and any other officially adopted plan that is applicable. City of Hamlet shall advise and comment on whether the proposed amendment is consistent with the City of Hamlet zoning ordinance and any other officially adopted plan that is applicable. The planning board shall provide a written recommendation to the city, which they have done, and, uh, deemed appropriate by the planning board, a comment by the planning board that a proposed amendment is inconsistent with the City of Hamlet ordinance shall not preclude the consideration of approval by the city council. Uh, at this time, council, I would ask for a motion to either adopt, approve it, or deny it.
I make a motion that we deny this because it does not meet the consistency statement of the City of Hamlet's ordinances.
Okay, so first, we're doing the consistency statement, okay? So, Jesse, you made a motion that it is not consistent?
It did not meet the consistency.
Okay, all right, so I've got a motion that it not, does not meet the consistency, do I have a second?
I have a second.
I got a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay, now I'll ask for the motion, um, as to whether to approve or deny the zoning.
Make a motion that we deny it as presented, was it B two?
Does not meet.
Consistency.
Due, due to it not meeting the consistency.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a second, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise, thank you. Okay, council, at this time, we will move along to the second rezoning petition. Um, this is down on Bridges Street, it's the old, I call it the old Gulf building, with chain link fence around it, right there at Spear Street and Bridges Street. Now, this time, I'll open the public hearing on it, and we'll entertain anyone who wishes to make a comment, and you are Mr. Strowman.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm Everett Strowman, Jr.
Okay.
It's been a long day, long day. But, uh, yeah, yeah, I was the owner of the, uh, the spot right there at one oh four Bridges. And, uh, I wanted, wanted to get it rezoned so I could put a, uh, storage, a vehicle storage yard. Um, I have a tow truck business, and, uh, I want to get on the city rotation, so, but you gotta have a lot.
That's right.
Inside the, uh, store, store and stuff, but, so, so I just gotta take one step at a time. So, uh, I seen it was a fault and stuff like that, and so I beat it on, and I, I wanted to be, and so, I said, hey. Yes, I just, trying to take one step at a time, see, see how it go.
Well, I'm glad somebody's finally bought it after all these years, they, they've been trying to get rid of it as long as I've been on council. So, uh, it sounds like it might be a good use, but, uh, uh, anyone have any questions for Mr. Strowman? If not, I believe Ms. Mary back there wanted to make, is she still here?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, did you want me to comment on it, or ask a question, or? You sitting back there, hidden behind that mask, I have a hard time.
My question, Mary McLaren on Bridges Street, uh, my question to Mr. Strowman is, what kind of business? You said it's gonna be a towing business?
Tow truck.
What kind of cars are you gonna be putting there?
They're gonna be ready. Earned whatever it is. It was a abandoned vehicle, uh, just a vehicle, right?
Okay.
And, uh, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be there forever, it's like a school block, uh, with the state, you got ten days to, like, somebody be calling you, y'all, calling me to come and do this. Uh, I put it in the fence for ten days, then I gotta let Raleigh know that I got it. Raleigh must have taken with it.
Oh, you don't know what you're getting into.
Raleigh's trying to own it by mail, if they take mine own it, and every week, it's right to the cell car. That vehicle will be sold, or whatever, it's gone. So, everywhere, it's not like they're gonna be there forever.
It's gonna be just a.
Wreck cars.
Store, store. I'm not trying to put them in there leaving forever, because, because the stock is so big, if I put them in there, I don't, I don't even need to buy them.
Quicker it gets, better than the more money it's parked.
My next question, how would that value, how would that affect our tax value in South Hamlet for the ones that own property?
I don't want to affect your tax value. Uh, everything, everything down that street, on the same side of the street with that lot, everything there is industrial. It's listed as industrial, all the way down to the, uh,
No.
Somebody's sales down there, what is it, no?
My family owns quite a bit of that street.
Okay, uh, now, across the street, and there's some vacant lots in there, too, and all of that right across the streets are R six, which is residential on one side of the street, and the other side of the street's industrial.
Who is your house relation to that, that lot?
I'm the last street across from the park.
Well, no, but where is that, that lot?
I have to pass it every day, that's what I'm saying.
You live where Jackie lives?
No.
Yeah, okay, so where, where do you live in relation to her house?
Jackie who?
Um, she's working food line, I can't remember her last name. Her house faces the, the playground.
Mine does, too.
She lives directly across the street from the playground, Mary does.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's the same house, I think it's the same house and playground.
Yes.
That's old, that's old Gulf plant, right across from.
Oh, raison d'etre.
Across from Imperial Foods, yeah.
No. My house faces, my house, my property is from that church to the parking lot. Yeah, that's where I'm.
Yeah, we know where you live.
Yeah, I know where you live, Mary.
I know you know.
And I know. And I know where Michael live, too.
That's right. But, um, my concern is, I, you know, the, um, I don't want any tax value going down, you know?
Oh, no, no, uh-uh, no, it shouldn't.
You don't want it to turn into a junkyard.
That's right.
That's right.
That thing is, right now, it's zoned I one, isn't it? Uh, Gail, you can't have a wrecking yard in I one.
Then Mr. Strowman's cousin's not there to stay forever, is he?
No, he stores until he get rid of it.
He stores, yeah.
Because quicker they go to the junkyard, the more money he's gonna have.
But, and, and, yeah, but in all honesty, when they leave, you're, you're, you won't just leave it empty, you, you're gonna constantly be putting cars there. Yeah, so I don't want you to be, yeah, don't want you to be misunderstood there.
And, and that's what, Mary, that's what you're against, you don't want it there all the time.
I understand what he's doing.
Do I?
I understand what he's doing.
Yes.
He, uh, he, he wants to store them, get rid of them, whatever the case may be.
Right.
And, um, I gotta say, I don't want our taxes to go down.
Because of that.
Mm-hmm.
Right. But I understand that.
And you know, we got, well.
Shouldn't affect your property value at all.
It doesn't affect it, yeah.
Sir?
It's way up the street from you, okay?
And it will not affect your property taxes.
What else other than the taxes?
That's it.
That's it.
Don't need any more taxes, do you?
Okay.
That's right.
Concerned about the tax value.
I'll hold all y'all to that.
Yeah.
She doesn't want the tax value to decrease, that's what you were saying.
Yes, and we, we, my sister and I have did a lot of work top adding on to our house to, um, and we wanna keep it better.
Yes, right. And I admire that. That's what it's all about.
Okay.
You're welcome.
And with it being on that same side of the street, the same exact, it wouldn't be any different.
Excuse me?
Because the zoning that it butts up beside of, it wouldn't be any different for you or your value.
No.
Okay. Oh, and, and one other thing, this is not pertaining to anything, but the city needs to clean the parking, the other side of the parking lot, the, the, uh, grass is growing up.
Okay.
It needs to be cleaned, bush talking something down.
Okay, Mr. Christian will make a note of that now.
Yes, sir.
We'll have it cleaned up.
You came to the right place.
Just not being devil's advocate, but when we take something that's in zoned industrial and zone a parcel in it with B two, that's not spot zoning, is it?
Uh, you wanna go? Uh, I think that the point that Mr. Morpheus, uh, made earlier is, is salient here because if there's a reason, and I, and I think it's been pointed out in the discussion that on that side of the street, the street seems to be a, kind of a demarcation line between a commercial, industrial, business zones, property, and residential, um, you know, or churches or other things like that that are in that residential zone. So, in this case, I, I think that is a, an appropriate, um, interpretation of the zoning as it currently exists and could be, um, you know, the zone, spot zoning is, is a fair, it's a good question, and I think the point that he made earlier is relevant in this case.
Basically the same.
And, and just one other thing to add, I think there's a chance this wouldn't even be spot zoning, cause the court would likely say that this is not uniformly zoned, cause there's R six, there's I, so it's, it's several different things there.
Um, security, what kind of security going happen there?
Channel all alone.
They'd be able to store some of them inside the building, too, if the police department needs them confiscated. Thank you, Ms. Mary, we appreciate it. Anyone else got a comment on this, uh, rezoning? Okay. Let me try again. Counsel, we have, uh, before us the, uh, recommendation and a statement of consistency. I need an approval for the, uh, consistency statement.
Make a motion that the request is in, um, compliance with the City of Hamlet's consistency statement, and it be approved.
And I'll make a second again on that.
Okay, let me.
Make a motion. Make a motion to accept it.
Is in compliance.
In compliance with it, it'd be approved.
Okay.
Basically, that it's consistent with the rules and the law.
Alright, council, I have a motion to, uh, approve the consistency statement. What are your wishes on that? I have a motion and a second. Did you get that, Gail? Okay.
Make a motion, we approve.
I got a motion to approve.
Second.
Alright. That approved, now, uh, need a motion to approve or deny the rezoning.
Make a motion.
We didn't vote, did we?
We haven't yet.
Yeah, we voted.
You voted on the consistency statement, I got five and O, right?
Yeah, I, I don't understand that, but I, I'll do it.
Now, on the rezoning, who made the motion?
Yeah, I need a motion to approve it or disapprove it.
Eddie to rezone it?
I made a motion to.
I second.
Okay, and I got a second from Abby.
Okay.
Is there any further comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise, alright. You got it?
You have to be a good neighbor.
You just need to get up with the police chief now and get approved for rotation. Get called all hours of day and night. Mr. Mary, if he messes up down there, let us know now. If he messes up, let us know.
She's gonna call us.
That's better. That's even better. There you go. Yeah, get him first.
We'll handle it.
Say to you, Mary.
I hate to let that other stuff go so long, but that was the only way to do it.
I'd like to take Harndy Marson and pinch his head.
Yeah, and I, I like him, but then, dead gum, he goes on, he's like preacher. Alright, council, let's move along to, uh, item number ten. And, uh, that's this big piece of thing here from Anderson, is that it?
Anderson Smith.
Yeah. Anderson Smith and White. And we just need to approve or disapprove the, uh, ordinance and, wait a minute, approve the audit contract.
Uh, the amount's eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Yep, that's it.
I remember where it used to be three thousand dollars. Shoot.
So I got a motion.
I have a motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor, got a second from Mr. Stewart. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise, now. Where am I now, okay? Item number eleven, special project fund ordinance for Hamlet wastewater expansion project.
Yes.
Mr. Christian.
Sorry, yes, mayor, um, this ordinance is, uh, to adopt a special project ordinance for the wastewater expansion. Uh, this is a project that will run multiple fiscal years. This project ordinance, similar to what we did with the ARP money, puts it in a separate pot where it can all be tracked separately and doesn't, uh, turn over with our normal fiscal year, so it puts everything in a separate special project ordinance.
In the total amount of seventeen million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Oof.
Ooh, bee.
Okay, I have a m- motion on it. Got a motion from Mr. Stewart. Did I have a motion? Oh, okay. Don't say it.
I think he said.
Alright, I got a motion to approve, I have a second?
Hmm, second.
Mr. McQueen. I think he, uh, the amount of money. Uh, any further comments on it? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Alright, last page here is, uh, approval of property tax release. Total. Total amount is eight hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-three cents.
So, sorry, mayor, can I interject for just a second, please?
What? Okay, hold it.
Also, in the special project ordinance, there is a, um, a resolution for a declaration of official intent to reimburse. That is basically saying that the city's gonna spend its own money up until the point that we get the grant money and we reimburse ourselves, and I think we would need a motion and approval of that resolution.
Where is that located in this packet?
It is located before the tax releases, so just one page back.
Before the what?
It's the pa, it's, uh, the, it's.
I got a tax release right here.
It's gonna be attached to your ordinance.
The last page of, yeah.
I still don't see it.
It's, it's right here.
Oh, okay, there we go. Alright. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, City of Hamlet, North Carolina, this declaration is made pursuant to the requirements of the United States Treasury Regulation Section one, point one fifty dash two, is intended to constitute a declaration of official intent to reimburse under such Treasury Reg- Regulation Section. Under signed, uh, we will spend the money, we have a plan of finance, maximum principal and amount of debt issued is seventeen million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And at this time, we'd like to make a declaration of official intent. Do I have a motion?
Say move.
Have a motion.
Second.
Got a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Where the devil did I lose that thing?
I didn't see it either.
Wonder if you should put one in my packet. I bet it's over there to be signed.
Yeah, man.
No, I don't need it. I'm good. I don't need it, overdone with it. Alright, budget amendments, that's where we are.
Nope, I'm sorry, we, I stopped us at the tax releases.
Tax release, you stuck that up here somewhere, didn't you? That's where we are, tax release. I got tax release right here.
Okay.
I'm good on that. Yeah, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. I have a motion on that.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second up here. Are you with us, Gail?
I am.
Okay. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Uh, move along to item number fourteen, you'll see in front of you, uh, twenty twenty-two Hamlet City Council regular monthly meeting schedule, and we are making a time change. And we will need an approval on this to change it to six P M.
I say move.
I have a motion.
Second.
Have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. It will now be at six P M. Item number fourteen A, now, I was looking through all this stuff, and there we are. That is with us older Americans.
Mayor, before you read that, I think we got kinda mixed up there, and we also overlooked the budget amendments item on the agenda.
Oh, okay. You did, you're right, it's under the tax release.
I'll just briefly explain.
Yeah, go ahead.
I sent these out earlier today, uh, these are following the last budget work session where we, uh, I went back to the staff and identified what things could we reasonably purchase and receive, uh, in this current fiscal year, and these are the things they came back to me with. Um, so I've been put those before you in a budget amendment today. As I mentioned in my email, this shows, uh, fund balance appropriations, uh, covering these expenditures, uh, from our existing fund balance. However, uh, whether or not that fund balance is actually utilized will be determined at the end of the year, depending on our financial position, so, um, and right now.
You're talking about thirty June.
That's right.
Okay, of this year.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Yeah, I, I noted on there that some of those, uh, did we need to make any approval on the, uh, on that letter that you had in there about, uh, the things to purchase? Where did I see that? It was attached to something.
No, I think it's just, just the budget amendments. I sent an email earlier today, if that's what you're referring to.
We're good, did, did you all get a chance to look at the stuff he wanted purchased, huh?
I did.
Okay. Okay, I need a, I need a, I'll, uh, a motion to approve the budget amendment.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Got a motion? Got a second from Abby? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Older Americans Month twenty twenty-two proclamation. Whereas the City of Hamlet includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community, and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcomed, included, and supported. And whereas the City of Hamlet recognizes our need to create a community that provides the services and supports older Americans' need to thrive and live independently for as long as possible. And whereas the City of Hamlet works to build an even better community for our oldest residents by planning programs that encourage independence, ensuring activities are responsive to individual needs and preferences, increasing access to services that support aging in place. Now, therefore, I, Bill Bayless, Mayor of Hamlet, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May of twenty twenty-two to be Older Americans Month. I urge every resident to cons- recognize the contributions of our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and joint efforts to support older American choices about how they age in their communities. Wow. We're, we're, we're down, we're down to manager's report.
Sorry, my chair gave out.
I can go. Been a long ride. Manager's report.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry, I about fell out of my chair, so I was a little. Discombobulated, but, uh, yeah, city manager's report, uh, just, um, really excited to welcome our new businesses to town. In the last couple of weeks, we've had several ribbon cuttings, Axter Grind's open, uh, they're doing well. Um, Bisquick next door is doing some really cool art stuff, and then the Nerdy Collective here on Main Street, uh, just has a really cool space, and I hope you guys can go check them out, um, when you get time. Uh, this Friday is Food Truck Friday, next Thursday is Yoga by the Tracks, uh, the Friday after that, and, uh, on May the twenty-seventh is another Food Truck Friday. We're closed on, for in observance of Memorial Day on May the thirtieth. Uh, there will be no change to any of the collection pickup schedules, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody got any questions for manager?
Is the air conditioner broken?
I, I couldn't get that thing to work.
They're coming tomorrow to replace it.
Oh, okay.
It's not there.
You could've told us, I mean, you know, we're gonna wear our Bermuda shorts and T-shirts.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I sure wouldn't have worn a long sleeve sweater.
Yeah, I'd put a jacket on. Um, we'll move along to comments of council, uh, Mr. Martin.
Briefly, um, thinking about the Fourth of July fireworks show. I was reading something in the Daily Journal that said for a small amount of, of fee that, that they would advertise any event that city or anybody would, is having every week up until the day of the event. Have you, did you see any of that? Wouldn't that be something we need to do is advertise?
You should have like a little community calendar.
Yeah, I don't know where, I don't know where it is, what, what it is, a hat would appear, but seemed like to me we need to, all the, all the, um, publications we can get announcing the notifications that this thing is happening. I was picturing, uh, fireworks show on it. Fireworks and rides and tow trucks and, you know, all that kinda stuff. I don't know.
It was for a community report, what's going on.
Is that what?
Yeah. I saw that in there.
Community calendar.
Community calendar.
But anyway, it's still probably worth putting in.
It's true.
Yeah, some, we're keeping our website pretty much up to date, aren't we?
Uh-huh, I think it is, I.
I'll, uh, Michelle and I have been, you know, trying to put that together, and mainly her, but I know she's been posting on Facebook, and we got some press on it, and I think adding an ad to that is, um, and we've been listening to the radio. Happy to add that with it.
Is that all you got, Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Sellers.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to thank all the citizens that came out tonight and, uh, viewed their request and their, uh, views on what's going on in the City of Hamlet. And I'd just like to, uh, encourage more people to keep coming out and telling the council exactly what the world, what's going on and how we can help. That concludes my statement.
Okay, Mr. Stewart?
Welcome.
I gotta catch up now, Ms. Covington.
Um, well, I enjoyed the meeting, too, for the most part, enjoyed the citizens and enjoyed their opinions. And, um, I think this is probably the most appropriate time for me to tell the people in the City of Hamlet that the primary is May seventeenth in Richmond County. And regardless of what you do, do something, because Hamlet has been severely affected in two issues in the last two years. And, you know, we really need to, I hear us struggle without the money to buy cameras to put in the neighborhoods and, you know, this constant financial struggle that we're facing, you know, on daily. These, the impacts of, of this are just, they continue to come back to haunt us. We get into zoning issues tonight, and we have faced the fact that their county rezoned an issue on a piece of property, not to our advantage outside the City of Hamlet, and allowed it to become a trash dump. And I think, you know, if the people in Hamlet want to protect their community, want to protect the sustainability and viability of their community, it's their obligation to get up and go make their voices heard, and I encourage you to do so. If you haven't early voted, it's this week through Saturday, and May seventeenth is the last day. So, you know, speak up for your communities, and that's not just ours, that's every community in Richmond County. Hoffman, Ellerby, Dobbin Heights, Norman, you know, it's time to make our voices heard.
That it? That it?
Mm-hmm. Well, I would say more, but I.
Oh, that's okay.
I would hold up my sign like somebody at a wrestling match.
Alright, call for Ms. McQueen in the Marine Corps Hampton.
All for Abby.
One thing for sure, if I had my phone on, it would've been all the way before now.
Oh, yeah.
So, just a couple of things, uh, what Ms. Covington says is absolutely correct. If, uh, if you want to help Hamlet, it's time to put the people in the seats on the county commissioners that will, uh,
Make a difference.
Make a difference for every municipality, there is and every citizen in the county as well. Um, so, that's, that's that part of that. Um, for the folks that came tonight to express their concern about their neighborhood, really, uh, enjoyed that conversation. Um, and to the folks that have been here. Um, and to the folks that have been here multiple times, it's still my commitment, I believe it's this council's commitment, and it's that man's commitment back there in the back, that we're gonna make sure it's a safe community. And it's gonna be done, and it's gonna be done, um, through enforcing the laws we have now, and that's exactly what we're gonna do. Um, stand by that one hundred percent. And just one quick clarification, the, how long have we had those tsunami cameras?
We had them three years, hadn't we?
We had them for a while. The entire time that we had those cameras, uh, two of them were on that side of the, the seventy-four, and two of them was on this side of seventy-four. And, uh, what the chief talked about tonight was a, a shining example, a good example of directed patrol. You identify a problem through feedback from the community, and you issue a solution in that direction, and we're gonna do that. Um, and that's all it.
Thank you. Well, I'm the same way, I'm, I, I, I know we went on a long time tonight, but I was really glad to see all these folks that came in tonight to talk to us, to get information about what we're doing, and I'm glad that we are, have been in the process of doing these things. I appreciate Mr. Morrison, uh, for what he does for the community. He does a lot of things that are just unsung, and people just don't realize it, but he makes a difference in the community. The, uh, talking about the cameras, uh, we made a major bust out of one of those cameras. Uh, they were looking, been looking all over the state for this man and woman that were robbing banks.
All over the southeast.
And we, yeah, we called them, we caught them on our camera and picked them up, and, uh, so that was a feather in our cap. The, uh, I hope everybody has a wonderful Memorial Day, and Memorial Day's coming up the end of May. And looks like the weather may be nice. Uh, you can't, you get up in the morning, it's forty-four degrees, and afternoon is eighty-five, it's, uh, it's kinda tough, especially on us, uh, older folks. But, uh, anyway, I hope that everyone has a wonderful Memorial Day, and remember, remembers what our servicemen have done, it's the reason that you're free is because of our servicemen. Everybody needs to vote. I don't care how you vote or who you vote for, but you need to vote. And, uh, get your two cents worth in. If you didn't vote, you ain't got no right to complain. Uh, but there's a lot of that goes on anyway. Yeah, vote for the good of Richmond County, I'll tell you. But, um, anyway, that's all I've got, and I would ask at this time for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Motion, I have a second. All in favor say aye. Pose likewise. Thank you all so much.